Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Public Housing. Please, at this time, silent all electronic devices. At no time, please do not approach the dais. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us, a sergeant-at-arms, will kindly assist you. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation. Chair Banks, we're ready to begin.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this hearing, this Committee on Public Housing for the New York City Council. I am Councilmember Banks and the chair of the committee, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Aviles and also nobody else. Hopefully, the other members will come. But today, we are talking about the Permanent Affordability Commitment Together Program, also known as PAC. And specifically, we are talking about when developments undergo the conversion from traditional public housing to PAC. We are also going to be hearing Introduction 10110, which is sponsored by Councilmember Alex Aviles, which would require the mayor, as an agency designated by the mayor, to give us a report on the impact of the PAC program. Wow, this is my first council hearing about PAC. This is far from the first time the council and this committee have examined the PAC and NITRA's public-private partnership models. These hearings and this oversight is important because we want residents to have a space and time to voice their concerns about how also to share their stories about when the PAC and how the PAC is successful or is successful. Compared to nearly 90-year history of public housing, the PAC program is still new to NITRA. The council and the residents must all work together to make sure it provides to its residents what it was intended to, namely, safe and secure homes free from hazardous conditions. Today, we are looking specifically at what happens during the conversion process from traditional Section 9 housing, which is managed by NITRA, to privately managed PAC program. My focus is on three main areas. First, what residents know, what they must do during that process. Second, what NITRA and the developers are required to do and what they are actually doing. And finally, how this committee and the council can conduct the necessary oversight to make sure that these residents of the quasi-public and private PAC housing are not being overlooked or left to fend for themselves. With the last point in mind, I'm interested to know NITRA's and the public's thoughts on Intro 110. This bill would be an important oversight tool for the council, and we want it to be as strong as we can make it. I would like to thank my staff, Michael Lambert, along with Public Housing Committee staff, Jose, Charles, Dan, Nicholas, Christopher, and Connor, for all the work they've put into this hearing. With that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Aviles. My predecessor has shared to speak about her bill. Councilmember Aviles?
Thank you, Chair Banks. Thank you to everyone for being here today. So during my time as chair of public housing, a theme that would emerge over and over again in our hearings was the lack of clarity, top to bottom, around the permanent affordability for Commitment Together Program, or PAC. The PAC program allows NITRA to offload property management to private entities, which theoretically should improve NITRA's bottom line, which we haven't seen materialize, and also theoretically allows tenants to receive repairs that they may have been requesting for years. Despite the PAC's program being in place for years, more and more developments slated for private management, we still do not have answers to some of the very fundamental questions. Now, I recognize that the program has evolved, and certainly, there are successes, but there are still many gaps. And among those questions, for example, is how is NITRA ensuring private managers are responsible to the needs of tenants? What are the tenants' rights after conversions takes place? What sorts of repairs have been conducted by private management since conversion? How many evictions have taken place since conversion? These are a small example. And are tenants actually satisfied with the conversions? These are just a few of the many questions that I continue to hear residents talk about after. And these are just some of the questions that Intro 110 aims to answer. If we are to continue to invest public dollars into privatization, at minimum, we should be aware of the effectiveness of the program and whether the program is carrying through on the promises made to public housing residents. I look forward to hearing feedback from the administration today, from advocates, from residents themselves, as we advance this piece of legislation, which will bring greater transparency to NITRA residents and to all residents of New York City. Thank you, Chair, and I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember. In keeping with tradition of this committee, before we hear from NITRA, we will hear first from a panel of residents. And those residents are, we're actually going to call two up at a time. We're going to start with Amelia Walden And you know what? Ms. Boyce, you can come on up too. And we'll start from my left. So that would be Mr. Rodriguez, and then we'll...
Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you, committee, for listening to a couple of points I want to make. My name is Eddie Rodriguez, and I just recently moved from Arizona back to New York, where I grew up. I may be one of the only people that's moving back in, but I'm here. My mother lives in the Reese Housing Projects on Avenue D, and she's lived there for 40 years. They are currently in the process of trying to convert that over to the PAC system that's working in New York. So a couple of things on that. I represent, so myself and Reese residents who are in the struggle to find out more about this, what is it impacted? And as an independent sort of journalist, I go around the city and I actually visit these places that are either in the process of being converted. Eden Wald, I know, is one that says it's happening. Langston Hughes been there, just checking the conditions out. One of the issues I have is that we, with NITRA, we still have a situation where we're trying to entrust NITRA, who has left these buildings sort of get run down over the last 50, 60 years, to be part of the process to now fix them with the privatization movement. And that's a trust issue that residents, that I've spoken to, just don't have. And to answer a couple of the questions that you said your committee has three main points. And what do residents know? Well, myself having gone to these meetings, I can see that a lot of the information that's put out is very jumbled together and not put in a process where the residents really know what the implications, once they sign on to this thing, are. And we're kind of seeing them around the city, that some of these places are either using shoddy materials and so on. We see it live. And what NITRA and developers can do, there's got to be a trust issue there, because we know, once it becomes privatized, the protections that maybe NITRA did provide no longer will exist. And that sets fear to these people that are in, a lot of them more elderly than not, and so on. And then, on your oversight bill, there absolutely has to be oversight, because part of our argument, from the resident standpoint, is that they're openly lied to, let's just call it that. And so, to your three points...
You could have 30 more seconds to finish up.
So, the three main points that you guys put out, it's really great. We need to make sure that the residents really know what will occur once they sign on to this. Is it for the benefit of them or as Avenue D, because it is such a coveted last spot on the river, that's very expensive land, let's be honest, once they fix it up? So that's a concern. We need the residents who live there to stay there and be happy there. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next person who's going to give testimony, I want to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witnesses table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony or may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out the appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topics. Thank you. Just had to get that on the record. And now, we will move forward with Ms. Walden.
My question is, first of all, NITRA...
Preston, thank you.
Oh, sorry. My first question is, under NITRA development, we did see shoddy materials in work, and we are still seeing that with this renovation. Okay, my next one. I was served papers with inaccurate service. Examples state that they left papers at my door, or they came to my apartment and I was not there, and I was home every day. So that needs to be looked into, because I figured that this is a scare tactic. Okay, the next thing is, we feel we are getting inferior materials, because with the new stoves, people have had oven fires, people have had breakdown of refrigerators. One person is blind, and something with their stove, and they wanted the daughter to go out and look for a stove, which they knew this person was blind from the beginning. Another one is, I'm just finding out that because I'm not refusing the risers they want to put in the building, they want to, on my line, they want to put a riser to the roof. They had the building since '21. They didn't notify us until late May of '23. So this is like something that's pushed on us, and we are not really ready for it or aware. They're downsizing your apartment space, and they don't want to account for it. Let me see, what else? Example, one thing, my apartment door, it has a gap straight down the side, and they put a little sweeper under the door. You can see the light, you can feel the air coming in. When you put in work requests, the assistant manager said they don't make schedule appointments. The appointments is very lagging. I've had appointments where, when they first took over, HPD had to come in and hire a contractor to change my door...
30 more seconds.
...to make it a slam lock. I mean, not slam lock, to make the door slam in case of a fire. Okay, now, our quality of life is still being affected, because they have automatic slam locks. People are being locked out of their apartments, having to pay a, what do you call it, hardware or electrician or someone to come out and let them in. Their so-called security is only up to maybe 11:00 p.m. If things happen before 11:00 p.m., sometimes you still don't get back in in a timely manner. It happened after 11:00 p.m., you are stuck with a bill. So we need to find out more clarity on that. I think that should be it. Okay, and I wanted to know, does NITRA or HUD ever visit these buildings during the renovation process? To visit apartments to see what type of work is being done? And when they hold the tenants' residence rent, they don't make them aware, because I'm in the process now, because we are back and forth. I'm not refusing the work, but if you want to break my wall or my floor for asbestos, and then you still downsize in my living space, that's affecting my physical and mental quality of life without being compensated for anything. So now, they're not, I find out, they're not accepting my rent, and I didn't know that until I went to the office. First, they told me that it was a backlog of the rents being, you know, processed. When I went there the other day, day before, now, the assistant manager tells me that it's because the riser is not, I won't let them in to do the risers, and that's not true.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walden, for your testimony. Now, we're going to move on to Ms. Boyce.
Good morning. I didn't prepare anything to speak about, because at this particular time, we just now, in December, we selected our development team that is to come into Bayview Houses. And we've had a series of meetings already with the residents and our development team. The reason why we chose PAC was because in September of 2022, I met with my executive board, and we discussed Bayview past, present, and future. The past, Bayview was like the country club, it was considered the country club of Brooklyn housing, NITRA developments. In the present, due to aging, there's a lot of infrastructural damage due to wear and tear, weather beaten and aging. Bayview first opened up in 1955, which I have lived there ever since it opened up, and I am still there. And then, we decided that if it kept going the way it was going, there wasn't going to be a future. The development was going to continue to have a steady downfall. So we decided that we could not stay Section 9 anymore. We had to make a change, and we selected to go to the PAC conversion.
All right. That concludes your testimony?
For now, yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boyce. Now, we're going to move on to Eve.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to say, first and foremost, as far as for Penn Workman Houses in East New York, that included four other developments, there was a lot of things that was promised that sound good, but there was a lot of misinformation, false information, and things that they know that people at the time, that they pressured us to be able to get along or to accept this PAC rad, we didn't have a choice. Because the reason why we didn't have a choice is because they rushed us through the time that we were having a pandemic. So everybody was afraid of being homeless. That's the reason why they were forced to sign, because they state that if they do not sign, you will be evicted. And I feel it's very wrong. And when I kept bringing up that the preservation trust and other things was coming about, they saying no. Not six months later, in June of 2022, now moving forward, that everybody has now the choice to vote. We didn't have a choice to vote. It was only 10% or 20%, and they used Penn Workman Houses to be able to get the contract, because they needed more Section 9 to be able to get the contract for the Section 8. Things that was promised, not. I still have not gotten my apartment done, is because even though we were forced to do something that we didn't want to do, we was promised a lot of things, as such, as my aunt said, they do not care about the residents. And the reason why I'm saying, you can put anything on paper as stats. Stats mean nothing if nobody is checking into it.
You have another minute.
I fell several times. Here's a picture of hospitality suites that they had individuals with oxygen tank. Only in 155, the A and the B line, they changed the pipes. They didn't change the pipes. They have obscured boxes for the fuses, where the juice is coming in from inside the cabinet. So if there's an electrical fire, the fire department will not know that it's inside the cabinet. Department of Buildings was called, nothing was done. There's also a case that was stemming from the PAC and the Rad that was filed on 6/21, case number 121CV04372, where a judge stated that the PAC and the Rad is inhumane and that, one, let's be clear, the PAC and Rad is not law. The PAC and Rad is a program, okay? So we were forced to do a lot. As currently, I am going to be evicted, because I refuse to sign the lease, okay? So I have an email also from HUD stating that leases should have been signed prior to the contract of conversion. That did not happen. They, meaning CNC Management, and the language that they use, they always want to be able not to say who's the landlord, but NITRA is the one calling the shots. But it's like something like a Ponzi scheme going on, and it's wrong, okay? I am being victimized. My car was set on fire. I fell down the stairs at least 22 times from the time that CNC, under this conversion. The things that's happening makes no sense. The Tenant Association, everybody that's supposed to do what they're supposed to do is not doing it. It's nothing but lies and is true. Who's checking behind them? CNC checks behind the contractor. The contractor check behind CNC is HUD. Radiator covers, they didn't change the coils. They didn't do a lot of things that they was going to say. They sound like used car salesmen until, and then you get, what they're doing is wrong, and I'm being victimized, okay? Every time I try to reach out some way, nobody is doing anything about it, because you know why? They say I gossip. I am being tormented, is because they say that I'm the one who, in fact, okay, called the Department of Justice and the DOI in regards to all of this fraud that's going on, and so forth and so on. They don't know that, and if so, that is my given right, okay? So resident engagement does not help at all with the process that's going on.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a couple of questions for the panel.
Yes.
I'm going to let...
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan has joined us, so we want to recognize him. Also, again, guys, we're going to allow for questions to the panel. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Aviles, and then I'm going to come back and I'm going to ask some questions myself.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. I wanted to follow up with you, Ms. Walden, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Could you, you mentioned the key situation, which has been an ongoing issue across NITRA, and it seems like particularly in conversion, has not been addressed. Can you state it again for the record? What is happening with the keys? And why would you have to, or any resident, would have to pay more money to the management company?
Okay, what happened, like I said, they had it since '21. They only notified us, limited information, late May of '23. So when you buy a house or whatever, whatever, don't you check the heating, electricity, and so-and-so, the major things? We feel that wasn't done. So when they thrust us on, this on to us at the last minute, they wanted to come in and break my floor, say asbestos. I refused, because you're supposed to have certain precautions in place before you do that. They wanted to move you out of your apartment for 30 days to another apartment. I'm not refusing, but I need to find out what's right and what's wrong, okay? On the C-line, I'm on the top floor. They want to go into the wall, put what they call a riser, put pipes in the wall, taking away some of my closet space, which is right in my living room. So I told them, no. First of all, when you put that, I'm sorry, that electric panel, when you move it from one side of the kitchen to the other, concealing the wall with cabinets, the pipes with cabinets, they put a fake, false wall from the top of the ceiling down to the bottom of the floor. Now, where that electric panel stopped, there's nothing under that space, but still, my dining look is small. When you do that, you've taken up part of my space. So I told them, I don't no longer have four rooms. Now, they want to do the closet, get downsized. They told me they'd bill a closet and put it in my living room. I said, well, do you know how unsightly that would look? So they don't even want to reduce my rent or anything. So they took me to court. They made an agreement with the judge. The judge told them, come to conclusion. So far, management is still trying to get out of me. Do I still plan on pursuing? So I told them, speak with my lawyer. I don't let him know that I know you're trying to get information from me, but now I find out that from February, on my rent receipts, it's like I'm behind in my rent. So two times I went to the office, the person available for leasing wasn't available. I went down to NITRA on Atlantic Avenue. They say I'm not converted, my voucher's not in effect. So now, the manager's telling me the other day that they're not accepting my rent. So the person was trying to give me my money orders back. So I told her, no, you keep it, give me something, telling me that this is why my rent is stating that I owe this and I owe that. So whatever paper they gave me, it wasn't sufficient for me. But I didn't know that they were on waiting for me, not waiting for me, that they didn't call me into the office, they interviewed me in the waiting area, that they were on the phone with their lawyer, so their lawyer is telling them what to do. So I told them, the assistant manager, he's telling me, but call your lawyer, maybe you also come to a conclusion. I said, no, tell your lawyer to call my lawyer, and then they can settle it with that. So now, I'm receiving, they're not accepting my rent. So that's February, March, and April. So I guess I'll be getting another receipt. They didn't let me know that they was holding the rent. And they are doing it to other tenants, but other tenants are not speaking up and speaking out.
Because they're afraid.
We have the right to ask questions and get legit answers.
Correct.
And I'm going to give you another example. I don't know what they're doing with the smoke alarms, because the people with disabilities, they should have those smoke alarms, especially the hard of hearing or blind also, that speaks, vibrates, and you know, whatever and whatever. I called the fire department myself and got them to go to a person's apartment who doesn't hear or speak. And they set up the whole thing and showed the son how to use it and the mother. They are not doing that with us. So we feel we are getting inferior materials, because for someone's refrigerator to break down, an oven to catch fire, and these probably new materials, what are we getting? Refurbish or what? They don't even give you any information. They gave us information with the stove. No information with the refrigerator. If you wanted to know what model, they have no inkling. It's just that we feel we are being treated unfairly. And it's no different from when NITRA had it, because we still having major problems. Now, if you break my wall in my living room, and if I become ill with asbestos poisoning, who's going to compensate me when I'm dead? I wouldn't do nothing about it.
I just have one. Ms. Walden, if there is, or I guess you mentioned a number of repairs, but have you ever received a price list that you would have to pay for obtaining any repairs in your apartment?
They do the repairs, but not in a timely manner. When HPD discovered that my original apartment door did not close completely, they put that as a violation from January. Not until March did management look into it. HPD had to, what he said, hire a outside contractor to come and make sure that door is safe for me in my apartment. Now, the new door they put up is still not fitting it. Draft is coming in from the hallway. You can see the light from the hallway clearly through that whole side doorway the lock is, and air is coming in and under the bottom.
Got it. And in terms of the complaint system, you mentioned that they're not scheduling appointments. What is, what is a complaint system and scheduling appointments look like under a conversion?
Okay, I've been putting in complaints since 2023, 2023.
Like, is it like the NITIA calls? Do they have a system where you get a ticket number, like, what, what is that? Is there a system?
The first manager that they had, the manager, I had to go to the office and ask to give me, um, uh, confirmation or some sort of tracking. And what did she say that, okay, she'll look into it. So now they do give you, um, a work order, you know, with a number on it and the date. But as far as repairs being addressed in a timely manner, no, just like my door. Maybe if I, if a fire occurred, maybe I would be dead by now. But they had to call an outside contractor, and the same thing with the door now. I've been putting it in, and here, this was from January, that I put it in again, but they're telling me as long as a ticket is open and the repairs is not done, the secretary staff is saying that they can't create another ticket. The manager says they don't make scheduled appointments, so how are you supposed to know when they are coming out?
That is a very interesting and disturbing fact.
Well, at a construction meeting, we used to have a construction meeting, like, well, they still have it every Monday, and I mentioned that. And the assistant manager blatantly said, we don't schedule appointments. So people at the table, their heads turned, they couldn't believe that he was saying something like that.
Thank you so much, and thank you for looking out for your neighbors, particularly your disabled neighbors who are clearly not being looked out after. They're lucky to have you as a neighbor. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, I have a question for Eve pertaining to the initial stages of when the conversion or the tenants were notified, uh, that RAD PAC or that Penn Workman Houses was going to be converted.
Correct.
What was the level of engagement by NITIA as far as explaining or setting up meetings with the tenants? And in your opinion, would you say that the tenants were satisfied with the information that they got from NITIA pertaining to this conversion and how it was gonna look?
No. From the very beginning, they tried to discreetly have a meeting back in 2020 quietly, and I got wind of it through the barons. I was on that call where they, they asked me to gather a certain amount of tenants, my aunt was on there, and, um, at first they were saying, no, 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 but it was yes. But they, they were saying that they were talking to us regarding this two years prior from the time that they was in, in talk of that. Now, from November of 2020 up until now, I have been to every meeting, not meaning been, but in person, meaning over the phone. Ever since December '21, when they received the, um, the contract for this PAC RAD, everything ceased. I have an email from HUD, okay, where it states that certain things that should have been done, X, Y, it's not being done. Every month, CNC management is supposed to have a construction meeting with the residents. It's meaning that they're supposed to have the meeting, but what they do is they monopolize the Tenant Association Board meeting to come 10, 15 minutes, walk around, talk, and they want the tenants from the board to be able to explain the process, and the board is not even correct right now. From when the board became established in 2021 to now, it's still dysfunctional. What they do is they focus on whoever, I'm not saying I can be opposed to it, she can be with it. Everybody is entitled to their own opinion, but when you take a position and you're supposed to be there for the tenants, you're supposed to advocate for them, because that's the, that's the reason why you act on it. What they do is they only choose and they like for people to, in other words, everything I say, because even when I was on the Zoom calls, Brian Honan, I had to contact an attorney, okay? Because everybody, I think you did a walkthrough with me one time when you just happened to be passing by, and when I was, um, they, they were doing a walkthrough with the Bronx. Everybody that came to do a walkthrough, they didn't do a walkthrough with us, they just, like I said, just breezed through everything with us. They did a walkthrough with the TA presidents in the Bronx, um, they made a makeshift apartment to show everything was nice, and it, and they tried to keep you at bay. Since under the PAC and the RAD for East New York, under the five developments that went under the PAC and the RAD, um, everything is going awry. And even when I went to a meeting at a Pink Houses, and I believe Nikki Lucas was there, where they had a panel of NITIA workers that was there, I allowed everybody to speak because when I speak, I like to listen to everybody, because if they don't know, they don't know what they're walking into. I was able to find out, I was able to have them say that the PAC and the RAD in Penn Workman in Linden is not working.
Well, in, in your honest opinion, when it comes to that early, the early stages of engagement, how would you rate, uh, NITIA on that early stage?
Well, you mean...
How would you, I mean, if you, if you had to rate them?
For them promoting it?
Promoting it, giving, giving you accurate information?
No, misinformation.
Right. Would you, would you say that the information?
They wanted to get the contract, that's what I'm saying. You can always give stats, and you can always give, we don't know what they're submitting. They were supposed to have a meeting with us. How do we know what, 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 what they submitting to HUD to be able to get the approval? We don't know. So we would have to go through the Freedom of Information Act, and then there's also one for when you're dealing with the federal government. I forgot the name of it, the acronym, but you can also get that. How do we know what's being submitted? We don't know what's being submitted.
Thank you.
We don't know what's being submitted.
All right. Thank you. Yes, another question by Councilmember Veilis.
I'm sorry. I, um, thank you, thank you. I'd like to follow up with Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, you're talking, you mentioned how the information that is being offered is just, it seems not accessible, and that the implications of, of what is being presented is unclear. Can you just tell us, like, what, what you've seen the interaction be about what is being presented? Where are the gaps? Is it, are, are, is information also being provided in multiple languages so that residents can understand what's happening?
So from the documents I saw, um, you know, they were putting out pamphlets on, on people's doors and saying, okay, these are the days when the meetings are gonna be held. Uh, I don't know that that was as much as an issue as the thickness of the packet that needed to be reviewed in a short period of time. Just looking at it as a former educator, it was almost, um, it's like if a kid misses class for a couple weeks and he comes back and you give him a packet, right? He can do the packet, but he's gonna miss that interactions in between, that kind of sense of. And then when the meetings occurred, and I went to every one of the meetings representing my mom, um, it, they, they couldn't answer the most basic questions when we were telling them that, you know, we were telling the residents in essence, make sure that you understand that once this RAD PAC thing takes into play, you don't have the negotiation skills that you do have with, let's say, NITIA, if you fall behind on rent, kind of that stuff. And what we're seeing from door-to-door knocking and talking to folks, like this young lady said, is that the work is, is not quality and the, um, evictions are being, notices are being put out. And we're seeing it at Reese Housing, and that hasn't even converted over. So that's why we are, you know, steadfast in, um, I know your oversight may look at some of these things, but what we're seeing is that the information is willfully not put forth in a respectful manner of the residents. And I'll, you know, I can equal that to say that they openly lie at these meetings. And when we confront them with information about, say, who, who is paying you, like, those sort of things that people should have the right to know, they can't answer them. Um, and, and with the Tenant Association, we have the same issues. They, and I don't blame them fully, because like this lady said, when, when they go and we go to these meetings, they're not prepared with the questions that the residents want answered if they're going to sign on to this thing, and...
Dictation.
I can see it from, um, uh, say, the ground level where it hasn't kicked in yet, but now with the testimony that they're giving, once it's kicked in, what we've been saying is what will happen, that the residents will be left behind. The residents that they say that they're gonna help is not who they're gonna help. And that's our stance on that, that, um, that it's, it's all rigged in their direction.
All right. We conclude this panel. Let me just recognize, Council, we've been joined by Councilmember Sanchez, um, and also too, we have, and the balcony, we have some students, college students from Gutman College. They're here with their urban planning class, so we want to welcome you and thank you for being a part of our hearing today. Now, we're gonna bring up NITIA, um, and, uh, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna swear you in.
Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yeah.
You can begin.
You can begin. Thank you. Just, you can identify yourself before you begin. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Chris Banks, members of the Committee on Public Housing, other distinguished members of the City Council, NITIA residents, community advocates, and members of the public. Good morning, I am Jonathan Gavia, NITIA's Executive Vice President for Real Estate Development. I am pleased to be joined by Lakeisha Miller, Executive Vice President for Leased Housing, Brian Honan, Executive Vice President of Intergovernmental Affairs, and other members of NITIA's team. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss PACT, an incredibly impactful initiative that is investing billions of dollars to completely renovate or rebuild the homes of thousands of NITIA residents and dramatically improving their quality of life. PACT also provides residents with professional property management and valuable social services, all while maintaining their rights and protections and keeping their rent permanently affordable. I'd like to thank the residents who spoke about the program earlier today. Collaboration with residents is a fundamental feature of the PACT initiative as it transforms their developments into a safer, healthier, and more beautiful place to live and for generations to come. Please, or the, okay, thank you. As you know, the capital needs across NITIA's portfolio have risen to an astonishing nearly $80 billion, an unacceptable reality that residents know all too well, as manifested every day by elevator and heating outages. If you can go to the next slide. Leaking roofs and facades, bursting pipes and mold and lead unabated. At the same time, for decades, the federal government has failed to provide public housing authorities across the nation with sufficient funding to keep their properties in a state of good repair. To address this critical and existential issue head-on, NITIA is using the PACT program to bring billions of dollars in desperately needed investment to our developments. PACT is NITIA's implementation of HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, and it is enabling us to radically transform many of our properties through top-to-bottom apartment, top-to-bottom apartment building and grounds renovations. Next slide, please. To date, over 20,000 apartments have converted to project-based Section 8 through the PACT program, and a record $1.8 billion in financing for capital repairs was closed in 2023 across four PACT deals. 138 developments comprising over 37,000 apartments are either in the engagement or pre-development process, under construction, or have received comprehensive repairs through PACT. Essentially, the PACT program facilitates billions in repairs and investment for our NITIA community. Right now, 57 developments are under active construction, representing over $3.9 billion in construction work happening across the city, work that would not be accomplished without PACT, considering the lack of federal capital funding available. Next slide, please. To bring comprehensive repairs and renovations to resident homes and address a development's entire range of capital needs, PACT leverages the more dependable and valuable Section 8 funding stream. As shown in the slideshow, key improvements include brand-new kitchens, bathrooms, windows, and apartment floors. Next slide. Updated common areas like laundry rooms, mailrooms, and building entrances. Next slide, please. Critically important upgrades to building systems such as elevators, boilers, roofs, windows, and facades, and improved grounds, including landscaping, lighting, security, and playgrounds. Next slide, please. Environmental hazards such as lead, asbestos, and mold are abated, and our other, and our PACT partners offer professional property management and enhanced onsite social services and community programming. After conversion, all PACT developments remain under public control. NITIA remains the permanent owner of the land and the buildings, administers the Section 8 subsidy, and continues to monitor conditions at a development following its conversion to Section 8. NITIA's leased housing department is the largest Section 8 administrator in the country. As a subsidy administrator for the program, NITIA continues to set each household's rent based on their annual income and oversees the creation of the Section 8 waitlist. Next slide, please. NITIA also has a specific team called Resident Outreach for Conversion and Modernization Services, who continue to conduct outreach to residents and support resident leaders at PACT sites after conversion. This is just one of the many teams supporting residents and the PACT process itself to make the engagement and transition as seamless as possible. Fundamental to our PACT program is centering resident priorities and expertise. Residents are not only involved at every step of the PACT, PACT planning process, but also help lead selection of partner teams, prioritize investments, and work in partnership with our PACT partners after conversion. During the planning process, we partner with resident leaders to share information and to keep residents informed and answer any questions. In partnership with these leaders, we host regular meetings and conduct tabling, office hours, open houses, info sessions, and workshops. A PACT resource team is also supporting our resident leaders by connecting them with trusted third-party advisors and consultants. Free legal assistance is available to residents via the PACT hotline operated by the Legal Aid Society. Resident committees have now selected 19 partner teams. This includes developers, general contractors, property managers, and social service providers who will elevate their quality of life and address priorities for the community. In 2023 alone, resident leaders across 30 developments, representing over 14,000 residents, have selected PACT partner teams to provide their communities with tailored investments through the program. Together, our partners and residents are creating detailed community plans to capture their planning and decision-making during the pre-development process. An example of how fundamental resident participation is to the PACT process, after about five years of extensive resident engagement and planning, residents of Fulton and Elliott Chelsea Houses expressed their preference to entirely rebuild their campuses as part of PACT. Next slide, please. In 2022, NITIA partnered with BFJ Planning, an independent planning and consulting firm, to conduct a comprehensive survey at our converted PACT sites. We are distributing surveys to all converted developments on a rolling basis and have collected results from Ocean Bay, Baychester, Murphy, and Batanzas. The majority of residents who responded to the survey have expressed strong satisfaction with the PACT program. As you will see on this slide, 70% of respondents recommend the PACT program for other NITIA developments, and nearly the same amount say they feel more stable in their living situation. This is because residents are very satisfied with the new management teams and the renovations. As you can see on this slide, 77% of residents who responded are very satisfied with the renovations to the buildings and even more satisfied with the renovations to the grounds. Two out of three respondents say that their new management is better than NITIA, and 78% of residents say that the buildings and grounds are cleaner. We will continue to survey residents and collect their direct feedback on the program. Survey responses have helped us understand what is working. They also help us determine how we can... Survey responses have helped us understand what is working. They also help us determine how we can improve the program so NITRA and our partners can better serve residents. Next slide, please. Transparency and accountability are also fundamental features of PACT. In line with those values, we recently launched the new PACT Dashboard, which provides an unprecedented level of insight into the PACT program. Available to anyone online, it tracks and displays performance metrics on maintenance and repairs, tenancy and construction, including resident hiring. Across the PACT program and at individual, individual PACT sites, at individual PACT sites, for instance, the dashboard shows that all PACT partners are addressing work orders within 30 days. It also shows that PACT partners are making significant progress with rehabilitation work, with five projects reaching over 50% completion in 2023. We believe the PACT Dashboard supports the intent of Introduction 110 2024 in reference to reports on the PACT program. We also wanted to take some time this morning to provide clarity about the PACT program. First, we'd like to discuss the differences and similarities of the Section 9 and Section 8 programs. Both programs are funded by the federal government and our HUD programs. Section 9 is funded annually by Congress with funding fluctuating year to year. Funding by the federal government is insufficient to cover the costs of long-term maintenance and capital needs of public housing. As shared earlier, this is evident by the fact that NITRA's recent physical needs assessment reflects nearly $80 billion in major capital repair needs across the city. The Section 8 program, however, comes with 20-year contract guaranteeing a set amount of funding each year, and by law, the contract must be renewed in perpetuity. Section 8 also provides a larger subsidy amount per household than the traditional Section 9 program. Given this guaranteed funding stream, our partners are able to raise debt to fund all capital repairs and save for capital, and save for capital repairs that will be needed in the future. In both programs, NITRA owns the land and the buildings. Through the PACT program, NITRA enters into a ground lease with each partner team maintaining our ownership of the buildings. In both programs, rent continues to be 30% of a household's adjusted gross income. I'd also like to confirm that all resident protections under Section 9 program will continue to apply after a household converts to project-based Section 8 through the PACT program. These protections are codified in NITRA's agreements with all PACT partners and between the PACT partner and each tenant. It is rumored that PACT partner, that the PACT program will displace residents from their homes. This is not true. Under the federal RAD program, all current public housing residents have the right to return to an apartment in their development if they need to move temporarily for construction, hazard mitigation, or any redevelopment activities. The federal RAD program was designed to keep residents in their homes. We bolster this federal requirement by requiring all partners to sign temporary move agreements with each household. And lastly, I'd like to clarify any misconceptions around evictions at PACT sites. The PACT program, in accordance with federal rules and regulations, provides strong anti-displacement protections for residents. At the time of conversion to project-based Section 8, all authorized residents will be offered a new lease, regardless of whether they owe back rent. In addition to providing all current NITRA tenants a lease, NITRA requires our PACT partners to work with onsite social service coordinators to conduct proactive outreach to help connect families with resources such as accessing public benefits or setting up payment installment plans. PACT partners must make every effort to avoid bringing a lease issue to housing court, and NITRA closely monitors these outreach efforts. Lease agreements automatically renew every year and cannot be terminated except for good cause, which includes criminal activity and non-payment. Residents continue, can continue to add people to their household, and permanent members will continue to have succession rights. In some, residents at PACT sites benefit from the multiple layers of oversight, the comprehensive repairs and renovations, and numerous opportunities provided to their community through enhanced social services and connections to jobs. We all know how critical NITRA is to New York City in providing safe, decent, and permanently affordable homes to families across the city. With nearly $80 billion in capital needs across the portfolio, we also know how critical programs like PACT are in ensuring NITRA can continue to carry out its vital mission. Our goal is not only to breathe new life into our developments, we are also striving to transform NITRA as an organization so it is better adapted to the funding realities of the day and can serve residents in a strong and sustainable way. Together, residents, community advocates, elected officials, and NITRA staff, we can ensure the authority remains a vital bastion of affordable housing for today and for decades to come. Thank you. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before we go forward with questions for the panel, let me just recognize the sixth and seventh and eighth grader from Eagle Academy. From the Bronx. Y'all could do better than that. Thank you. And they're also from, I believe, Councilmembers the Stevens District. Now, thank you again for the testimony, and I guess we, some of the questions were answered through the presentation on overall numbers. I want to know, what is, in general, what's the general timeframe for when a under-construction development is completed? What's the general timeframe?
So from the date when we do the conversion or the closing, it typically takes two to three years to complete a renovation. The timing will vary depending on the size of the development, as well as, you know, the level of work that has to be done. So if it needs to be extensive, like in the case of Williamsburg Houses where there needs to be extensive lead abatement, then it could take more time than, you know, the two-year timeframe that we generally aim for.
Is a timeframe stipulated in the initial contract with NITRA?
Yes.
And for the 54 in planning and engagement, when should we expect those developments to be fully converted?
So, all of those projects are currently going through the pre-development process, which means the PACT partners are onsite, developing their scopes of work, conducting resident engagement. And all of those projects will be closing or converting through 2024 and 2025.
Okay, thank you. Also, just to get clarity, how many developments and units are expected to transition into the PACT program by 2030?
The commitment that was made in December of 2018 was to convert 62,000 units through PACT.
And how will future developments be chosen by the PACT program?
So, we look at a number of metrics, but there are three areas that we focus on. Number one is the level of deterioration, as primarily determined by the physical needs assessment. We also look at sites where NITRA struggles to provide sufficient management and, and, you know, day-to-day, day-to-day property management, I guess. So those are the two areas that we look at primarily, and then we also, of course, work with residents to make sure that there is buy-in.
Specifically, will developments ever be entered into the PACT program without a resident vote?
Sorry, say that again?
Will developments be entered into the PACT program without a resident vote?
So we work with residents and follow their lead. And, you know, right now, we have not had a vote on a PACT site. We work with resident leadership and the wider resident body. And if we collectively feel that there is support to move forward with PACT, we will do so.
So residents don't have a say as to if they want to be entered into the PACT program? It's, they're compelled based off of the, the points you pointed out?
No, we will have, again, we will work with the resident leaders at first, and if they are interested in PACT, we will then host a number of meetings with the larger resident body, engage interest, and if there is interest, we will proceed. And, you know, if not, then that's a different, and I think Brian might want to add something.
Well, let me just ask you this specifically. What, what amount of support will be required to move a development into the PACT program?
So far, we've been able to gauge it just based on the meetings that we've been having with residents, you know.
So there's no numerical number, there's no threshold, there's no, obviously, you said there's no voting.
That is correct. So far, that is correct.
Semi-correct that the, once the tenant association makes that decision, they speak for the entire development?
No, as I said, we will have, we go from the tenant association meetings, then we have larger meetings with the larger resident body. And if collectively, between the leadership and the, you know, the resident body and ourselves, we feel like there's a good project here, we will move forward.
Brian, you had something to add?
Sure. Thank you so much, Councilmember, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to. And the federal law does not require a percentage of residents to support a PACT project for conversion. However, we have engaged residents in certain sites, and they have told us, no, we're not interested in this program. And Jonathan and his team have plenty of work to do throughout the city, and we have no interest in forcing this on, on residents. The thing is, the, our conditions right now have, as you all know, we have $78 billion in capital needs. We have developments. In your district, for instance, you know, Boulevard Houses and Linden Houses were both built by the City of New York and had no operating or capital funding. We needed to find a source of funding for that development. We engaged the residents there for almost two years before we were able to convert that property. Ferrantino Plaza, as you know, again, in your district, conditions were there so bad that the residents had to be relocated. What we're seeing at properties right now is that residents are eager to get the renovations that they deserve, renovations that they've wanted for years. And so, we are really interested in engaging with residents who, who want, you know, these programs.
I mean, one thing I would agree with you is that there are residents, and I think majority of residents, I think all the residents, want better living conditions within NITRA. It's just how to go about getting there. And, you know, from, from my opinion and from speaking to residents in my district, RAD PAC hasn't, hasn't been the best program that has been forced upon the tenants, or that has been given to the tenants. Particularly, what information about the amount of public support will be shared with the residents, the council, and the public for the, I'm sorry, and the public for developments entering into the, into a PACT vote, without a PACT vote?
Once again, in order to do conversion, we are not required to take, you know, surveys, to hold votes, so it would be, we wouldn't have that information. However, we do go through extensive votes, in, in, net votes, excuse me, meetings that we have regularly, you know, with residents. The attendance is, is very good. We have residents who participate from very, very early on to the process, all the way up to selecting development teams and social service teams. So residents, you know, the goal here is to make sure that we have very engaged residents throughout the process, from before conversion to after conversion and, and moving forward.
Okay. With the introduction of the trust, has the implementation of the trust resulted in any reorganization or management changes at NITRA in relation to the PACT program?
No, I would say no, not in relation to the PACT program. We do have a team though in place, a very small team, that now look, you know, at two sites where we've had elections, which is Dostron Houses and Bronx River Edition. We have a, you know, a small team that engages tenants around there, around the elections. And we also have two other elections that are in process at Coney Island Houses and Coney Island Site 1B, otherwise known as Unity. But in terms of the way the real estate team, you know, functions, it really has, you know, they've been engaged with that team to make sure that residents have information on, you know, all the choices. But in the way they do business, I wouldn't say so. And Jonathan could speak more to his department.
I would just reiterate what Brian said. It has not, at this point, changed the way real estate does its work.
When a property shifts from public housing to RAD, we have been told that the real estate develop, the real estate department, along with the community development and lease housing department, all have a role in overseeing the RAD properties. How is responsibility divided amongst these offices?
Well, again, I've got Lakeisha Miller here from Our Leased Housing, so there is certainly a Section 8 administration oversight in terms of, you know, the waitlist, recertifications, and subsidy administration, and Lakeisha can chime in with a little bit more if, if necessary. Within the real estate group, we have a design and construction team. The construction team goes out and does random investigation, inspections to make sure that the construction is progressing as expected. And our asset management team collects monthly data from all of the PACT partners on a range of issues, you know, from work orders and resolution of those work orders, tenancy proceedings, legal proceedings, Section 3 hiring, and financial performance. And then NITRA also has a compliance team, and they also go out and do spot sort of inspections to make sure that the projects are complying with all relevant rules and regulations.
Well, is there a designated person who's responsible for all the issues at any particular development?
Within NITRA?
Yeah.
I mean, it depends on the issue, right? So if it is a Section 8-related issue, it would be Lakeisha and her team. If it's related to the monthly reporting or construction that I mentioned, it would be within my team. And each, the design and construction team and the asset management team have leadership there, so they would be primarily accountable.
So there's no single point person that will resolve an issue or mediate an issue that may arise?
It's all dependent upon what the issue would be, so that we can make sure we're, you know, bringing the right expertise to whatever the issue happens to be.
Okay, well, how often do regular meetings and communications take place around any particular development?
There are numerous meetings happening all the time, again, depending on what the issues may be and where the projects are in the life cycle. So when we're in the pre-development stage, we are out there, you know, we have scheduled meetings, and we're also willing to go out at any time to resolve issues. So there's, you know, there's, there's not necessarily, you know, we're only, we're not only committing to a fixed schedule, we will go out and make sure we're addressing resident concerns in real time. You know, during the construction phase, we are typically having monthly meetings, and post-construction, we're also out at the sites very regular as well.
Does anyone who, who worked at the development before, pre-conversion, still work at the development after the conversion?
Existing property management staff certainly have the opportunity and option to take up employment with the, with the new managers. To my knowledge, none have accepted the opportunities at this point and have instead been transferred to other NITRA developments.
So, I mean, so when that transition does take place, so it's just, you hand the keys over to the developer and disappear?
No.
Well, I mean, you know, take quote-unquote your oversight position?
So, in the lead-up to the closing, there are regular meetings between the existing property management staff and the incoming property managers so that they can understand how the buildings and the systems operate so that there is a seamless transition. It doesn't just, you know, happen in one day.
Okay, well, it seems that way. Has there been any thought of having a designated transition team with the members of the offices who have dealt with the development pre-conversion and members of the offices who will deal with it, deal with the development post-conversion to allow information to be shared and for residents to have some similar faces to deal with? Is that taken into consideration and?
Again, we work to make sure that there is overlap both pre and post-conversion, but certainly always willing to explore other opportunities to continually improve the program, so this is something that we can certainly consider.
I'd like to, you know, add too, we don't just hand over the keys and say, you know, good luck. We, we continue to own the property, we continue to own the buildings, we have an interest to make sure that the conversion goes smoothly. There has been many cases, especially early in conversion processes, where there have been, you know, emergency situations where NITRA staff, who knows the property better, has been, you know, worked alongside with the partners, you know, to make sure that they understand the systems, that they make, you know, make sure that they've been able to get things like heat back on quickly or, you know, other outages. But once, after a while, once they get used to the systems, once they put in their new systems, those things aren't required as much. But early on, in the process, we have seen, we have seen that.
Particularly when it comes to document sharing, how are documents transferred over to the new management?
In the months leading up to the conversion, we are certainly providing all forms of documentation, whether it's related to the building and their conditions and the systems, but also, you know, the resident files so that they, so that the new team can start to build out their rent rules and the like, and they can understand who all of their incoming residents are going to be. I don't know, Lakeisha, if you can speak to some of that as well. But it is very comprehensive, and we try to make sure that they have a full package well before the conversion so that they can hit the ground running at conversion.
To add in, we're also scanning in information related to like the last recertification vital documents so that the landlord has access to that most recent.
So it's a, it's a system that the electronic system that where the documents are scanned on and transferred over to the management and the. on and transferred over to the management in a form of a, was it a disco? I mean, how's it actually handed over to them?
They are physically scanning. They maintain their own database, as well as, NITRA has a database of documents.
Got you. What resources are currently available for tenants to find their documents and being properly handled by the new management?
I want to speak for management. I can't speak for management.
Well, I mean, you do the oversight, that's why I'm asking you.
Sorry, can you repeat?
What resources is currently available for tenants who find their documents, who find their documents were actually, were not being properly handled during the transition? What process is put in place?
I don't know that that happens often, but, you know, when we have heard of issues of incomplete information, we work with, you know, the existing team at NITRA, as well as the property, the incoming property managers, to make sure the files are complete. It's not, I wouldn't say a systemic issue, but sometimes, for whatever reason, there are documents that might be missing, we want to make sure that we have a complete file.
Well, there have been many instances where tenants have put in documents with the prior management, whether it was to change the composition of the household or add folks to the composition of the household, and that information wasn't transferred over and has resulted in being dragged into court, or possibly, you know, leading towards an eviction. So that's the reason why we're asking this question as to what process is put in place to make sure that documents are being transferred over properly and that this, this, this aggressive, you know, attack on the tenants to, to drag them in a court is, it stops. So we need to get some clarity as to how those documents are being transferred over, because we're not, it's not happening on the ground, and then management, when those controversies do arise, management is saying, "Well, you gotta go to NITRA." It's like a back and forth. So if we can get some more clarity on that, greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Are new management companies required to maintain a 24/7 hotline or any equivalent services to receive tenant feedback?
I wouldn't say it's required to be 24 hours, but they all have various methods of communication, whether it's email, telephone, and the like, and so we expect our PAC partners to provide a high level of customer service to make sure that they're hearing from residents.
So does that high level, I guess, response in a sense, or does it require them to actually maintain, or are they obligated to respond to tenants within a certain timeframe?
We have not stipulated a specific timeframe, but, you know, we expect that they will be addressing resident concerns timely, and if residents do not feel satisfied, there's a number of venues that residents can come to us, and then we will step in and, you know, ask questions and make sure that the PAC partners respond in quickly.
So does NITRA conduct audits to check the proper transition of documents to the new management?
Well, again, we have the files that we have. When we try to send over a complete set of files, and when we become aware of potential issues, we try to rectify that as quickly as possible.
Okay. Does NITRA require new management to audit their own records to check for proper transition documents?
I mean, we have checklists of all the documents that should be provided in any file, so whether it is a resident, you know, noting that something might be missing, or the PAC partner noting that something's missing, we, that's how we will triangulate and figure out how to identify what's missing, if anything, and then either find the document or recreate a document if necessary.
Well, when it comes to shelter allowance information, we've received concerns that NITRA and HRA do not automatically update the shelter allowance information when a property transitioned from public housing to PAC. This administrative fix could prevent a PAC developer from filing eviction for non-payment. Can we get a commitment or timeline from NITRA on when this issue will be fixed?
So council member, I'm happy to say that it has already been fixed. We do work with HRA pre-conversion to make sure that they know that they have clients who live in the, in the development that is about to be converted, so this way shelter allowance payments are transferred to the new development team. Early on, this was an issue in, in our early conversions. It was something that we learned, it was something that, yes, unfortunately, wasn't thought of before, and payments were going to NITRA, but that was corrected. And so now, on day one, payments should be going, you know, straight to the new development team.
When it comes to tenant outreach, pre and during and post-conversion, the RAD lease was drafted with input and assistance from tenants and housing advocates. Has there been any changes to the lease or any regulatory documents since their creation?
Yes, the lease has been updated periodically. In fact, right now, it is going through a review and an update.
Okay. And how often does NITRA solicit recommendations from residents and leaders and housing advocates on what can be improved or modified on these lease agreements?
Anytime.
Has anything been recently recommended or modified?
Most of what we do is on points of clarification. The original lease was developed, as you mentioned, with housing advocates, legal aid, and residents, and so I think the base document is, largely addresses the issues, so some, a lot of what we do is largely for clarification.
And who was presently responsible for outreach to tenants before and during and after RAD PAC conversion?
So Leroy Williams, who is my colleague to my right, runs a team that does some of the outreach, and we also, within real estate, partner with them to do some outreach, but I'll let Leroy start, and we can fill in some gaps if necessary.
Yes, sir.
Hello, council member, how are you?
Hey.
So we have a dedicated team that works with residents overall and engagement. Specifically, we do, as some of the residents already talked about, door-to-door sharing of information. We work with our partners in real estate and the development partners in making sure that we're planning those monthly meetings accordingly, making sure the proper languages are distributed to residents often. We have a PAC hotline that you either can call or email to make sure that you, if you have questions, we can make sure within a 48-hour notice, return your phone call and answer any questions that a resident may have. We send out robocall and email reminders for all meetings that we have, to make sure people are reminded, besides just putting up notices door by door. We make sure that the Resident Association is a part of everything that we do, all of the planning for meetings and any type of engagement, because of course, we do want to make sure that we have foundational engagement, but every development's different, so we want to make sure that we set a plan that sets the engagement for that specific development. In the last few years, we've learned that, you know, residents want to see someone and make sure that, ongoingly, that they know that a particular person would like to be at the development, so we instituted a PAC office hours for all PAC developments, where staff of mines are at a specific site. It could be at a management office or a TA office, and they know that that staff person will be there every Tuesday and Thursday from 1:00 to 5:00, and to make sure that they can come down and talk to an actual staff person to answer questions.
How do, how do you determine that the outreach efforts you conducted is sufficient?
So again, we sit down with the Resident Association and any resident that would like to take part in it, to make sure that besides the monthly meetings, besides just the ongoing distribution of information, we try to form an engagement plan that fits the needs of that residence. Again, there's larger developments and there's very small developments, so we want to make sure that it fits the needs of the residents.
All right. What recourse exists for tenants who find that the PAC developers are not maintaining sufficient levels of outreach or communication during the process?
So I'll just talk about what my staff doing, John, I'm sure I can jump in, but I have a post-conversion unit that works with the resident associations, the management companies, and the social services offices, where we go and inspect and meet with them quarterly to make sure that we're hearing in real time, you know, issues and concerns. We make sure to partner with our asset management team at real estate to transfer that information to them, to make sure that we're addressing all of the issues and concerns and getting back to the resident in a timely basis. The residents are, besides just the quarterly meetings, they can also call us at any time, and we can set up special meetings as needed.
Thank you. Now we're going to move forward to, oh, we have been joined by Councilman Salamanca. We're going to now move forward with a round of questions from committee members, and we're going to begin with Councilmember Villas.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see you all. I guess I'd like to, so many questions. So many questions. Let me start very quickly, because I know I'm on a clock this time, so I don't have the liberty of yapping, but in the response, in the response to the survey that you mentioned in your presentation, you mentioned four developments participated in the survey. Can you tell me how many respondents that included?
It was about a thousand.
A thousand responded out of how many tenants in those four developments?
Do we have the, sorry? Twenty-one percent.
It was a 20% response rate for each development?
Overall.
Overall. So some could be 5%, some could be 7%, some could be 30%. I would love for you to provide to the council a breakdown of what that actually looks like.
Sure.
Anyway, back to my questions. Can you tell me how much the city has invested into the PAC program since the program started?
We can get you the total amount of city subsidy that has gone into a couple of the deals. The majority of the deals have not received city subsidy, but Edenwald and Reed Park Rock are the first two to receive city subsidy, and we expect, as we go forward, there will be additional projects that will require some city capital.
There is a huge investment of staff and NITRA time, I'm sure, in putting together these deals and units and potential oversight, creating the dashboard, so I would imagine it's significantly higher than just direct subsidy. Is that correct?
Certainly, yes. There's NITRA stamp time.
Could you provide some estimation of what that actual direct investment in developing, maintaining, and expanding this program is looking like?
We would, I would have to look into that. I don't know what that would be.
Thank you. We look forward to receiving the information. You mentioned, you mentioned the number of conversions over the next two years, I guess that would complete the full amount that is in the pipeline, and the end amount. Of course, I'm not doing the math, but do you expect to continue to aggressively fill PAC sites over the next five years?
Well, the commitment was to convert 62,000 over 10 years, starting in December of 2018, so it is our intention to get to that 62,000 by the end, by the deadline of 2028.
Okay. And in terms of, how is, how is NITRA monitoring response time to tenant requests at the PAC development currently? And how would you respond to a resident who said that in her development that's been converted, you're only allowed to submit one request at a time, and that management told her she could not submit another request?
So we track work orders and resolution on work orders on a monthly basis, and overall, the performance is very strong, well over 90% on time. However, as we've heard, sometimes that doesn't seem to be the case, so I would, you know, I would invite the residents to obviously work with the, their property managers, but also if they're not getting satisfactory answers, they can reach out to us through the PAC hotline, through CCC, through 311, but primarily through us, and we will look into the issue.
How many resident complaints are you getting through the PAC hotline?
I don't have an exact number. It's not a huge number, though, I can tell you that.
Okay. In terms of, how is NITRA, oh, sorry, Chair, if I may, I'm almost done.
You may, you have another minute if you want.
Okay, thank you. How is NITRA able to understand the tenant repair needs that are being met in the NITRA developments? Tell me, what does that actual monitoring look like in verifying that quality repair is in fact being done, and tenants are in fact satisfied with the service that they are being provided?
Well, again, we go out, you know, we have our design and construction team that is going out, making sure that the construction is progressing as expected and consistent with the scope that we agreed to with our PAC partners, and that happens throughout the construction process. Post-construction, there's also going to be annual HQS inspections to make sure that the apartments were, you know, repaired correctly and are continuing to be maintained appropriately. We've also, as mentioned in my testimony, we've developed this survey that we are administering on a rolling basis, so as developments are completed, in terms of their construction, there will be surveys, and we will gauge resident satisfaction with both the construction and the property management.
And obviously, I mean, I feel like I remember talking to you about it when it was developed, so I'm glad to see that it has been implemented. I guess, could you provide the council with an accounting of how many inspections have been done to date? What is, is there a metric by which, I guess, oversight feels robust enough for you to feel like these numbers that are on the benchmark are in fact verifiable?
We could put that information together for you.
Do you have, do you have benchmarks for the quality, I think they're called quality assistants or quality monitoring team?
You mean the HQS?
Yes.
Did you want to speak to it?
Hi. As it relates to its housing quality standards, it is an inspection required by HUD, no less than annually. We are required to do 100% basically annually. We have set, with HUD discretion, permission, if the inspection passes, we do it biannually. Residents can also, if they feel the need, they can contact us and request a special inspection. If they feel like in between their regular HUD-required inspection that something is in disrepair, they can contact us, and we'll come back and help.
Councilmember May, and Lakisha could probably even add to what I'm going to say too, is that the federal government recently put in even more stringent standards in place in terms of not inspecting the units, but also inspecting the common areas and, and safety and inspection standards. So, so that is not only true for, to PAC properties, but also true for public housing.
Yep, and I'm glad for that, certainly, but biannual, I think what we see in the pre-panel is there are still some real gaps here, and these are the same complaints we've heard over the years, that there continues to be this disconnection between, residents are experiencing shoddy repairs, real challenges with the private management firms, and not a lot of remedy to that effect, and we're continuing full steam ahead with the program. Can we, and obviously, we have to acknowledge, where flowers are due, that some of these developments, you know, have been successful, and there are, there are real, there is real resident satisfaction. Nevertheless, in terms of the legislation that is being proposed today, you referenced the benchmarks that is on the website, and I was looking at them, and I think they're moderately helpful for someone like me, but certainly even when I was looking for Penn Wharton houses, in these benchmarks, they're classified by bundle. That's relatively useless if you don't know what the bundles actually are, so I would say a resident, that would not be helpful for them. It wasn't helpful for me, so you may want to reconsider, but if, and none of this data is disaggregated, and certainly, I think the legislation put forward relatively minimal standards of impact, and I think we're going to hear that we need to increase those, we need to... we're going to hear that we need to increase those, we need to make the measures more robust, that we would like to hear from NYCHA and the mayor's office around. This does not meet the intention of the legislation. I think there's still some space in between. I would like to know very clearly if the administration is interested in working together to get a robust impact statement on PAC.
Yeah, yes, we are.
No, so Councilmember, I think we've heard you. And this is something that you've called for, for a long time. I think the dashboard is very new, but we would be happy to work with you and the council, and the chairman, and the council staff on making it even more robust and, you know, and making sure that it is user-friendly and also has the data that is the most useful. But this is just the start. The one thing about this program, it has evolved over the years and it has taken a lot of input. And to us, transparency, you know, and, you know, the more data that's out there can only, you know, help the program.
Thank you. And I would just like to say in closing, I think residents need to be given an option to choose the, the future of their developments and to be given full, accurate information. And written information is one thing. Accessible information is another, which often requires conversations and detangling and using language that is accessible. And much of these documents are incomprehensible. So I would say we need to do better because we're still having the same conversation around these, you know, highly technical documents that are not helpful to residents who are given the tasks of reviewing them and coming to some sort of conclusion in very short timeframes. It is an unfair engagement. But also the same for what is on the website. Thank you for starting that. Nevertheless, if the data that is here is incomprehensible and not usable, because the benchmark says right now that PAC, pretty much, there are no outstanding work orders, and yet we see here that that is not in fact the case, there is something wrong. So please continue to do the work of making things truly accessible to the residents and having them truly engage in a process of dignity and autonomy where they decide with full information, not after the fact, like demolition, full information before they make choices. With that, I thank you and I yield, and thank you so much for the courtesy, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now we're going to move, we're going to allow Councilmember Sanchez to have a, into the round of questions.
Thank you Chair, and good morning, friends. It's good to see you all. I have a lot of questions, so if we could, I have a lot of questions, okay. I have, I have a lot of questions, so if we could just, just try to be very direct. So first of all, just, just by way of framing, and we heard, we heard from tenants on the pre-panel, thank you so much for testifying. It's a, it's a very big impact, 35% of the public housing portfolio in the city of New York transferring over to private management through the PAC program, 62,000 units. That's, that's really big. So I just want to, I'm going to just ask this question. Is there a goal for the trust? How many units are going to be converted via the trust?
Thank you, Councilmember. The legislation gives us the ability to transfer 25,000 units.
Twenty-five, okay, thank you so much. Second, picking up where Councilmember Aviles left off, and directly in relation to so many of the concerns we heard this morning from our tenant panel, I was listening online, thanks technology. What oversight or inspections is there on PAC conversion construction sites? Is DOB inspecting these, these sites? Does NYCHA have a dedicated team?
So certainly, you know, all regulatory agencies can inspect at any time. But as it relates to our direct involvement, there's the design and construction team within real estate that conducts inspections. Some of that is staff-based. We also have a couple of firms that, that help augment that work for us and go out and do inspections so that we can ensure that the work is progressing as expected.
And so if, if NYCHA tenants observe what they, what they deem to be unsafe work practices, like asbestos incorrectly, asbestos remediation work being incorrectly covered or unsafe lead practices, et cetera, who do they call? Do they call 3-1-1?
They can certainly reach out to us and we will respond quickly. We look, we have always responded to every complaint that we've gotten, basically immediately.
Thank you.
And yes, they can.
Also call 3-1-1. You can also call 3-1-1 and let your local council members know.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, third, with respect to the PAC hotline you mentioned, you said Legal Aid Society is, is receiving funding to do this work. How much funding is Legal Aid Society receiving? What is the source of these funds? And are they receiving enough funds to represent tenants in court, or is this simply the operation of the hotline? And if, if, if so, what is, what sources or resources do tenants have for representation in court?
We can get you this data as a follow-up. But generally, the funding comes out of each transaction to ensure that there's sufficient funding.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to that. Chair, if I may?
You may.
A couple more. I'm going to talk fast. I have been told I'm good at that. Right sizing, sizing up, sizing down. How many families in the completed PAC conversions have been right-sized up? How many have been right-sized down? And have there been eviction proceedings because, eviction proceedings or completions due to refusals to right-size?
Thank you for your question. We can get you the exact number on how many are required to right-size up and down following this session.
So you do not have that number today. Okay. Thank you. How many over-income families remain in PAC-converted buildings? By how much have their rents increased? And how are rents determined for these over-income families? Yeah, I think, Gavaya, you know where I'm coming from.
The same, I am sorry, but the same answer. We will get you that information following this session.
Okay. And for context, the Center for Court Innovation has raised concerns about rent increases at PAC sites. RAD regulations require PAC managers to charge flat rents based on Section 8 flat rent, the Section 8 flat rent schedule instead of the NYCHA flat rent schedule. And there is concern that this change can push higher and moderate income families out of PAC buildings, helping to concentrate poverty and depleting shared resources among neighbors. So really look forward to that information. Okay, thank you. Regarding transfers, actually, I'm going to skip this one due to time. Regarding transparency, so in the process of conversion, various documents are produced by, by NYCHA to ensure the protection of the NYCHA property, tenant rights. Which of these are shared, which are not, and why not? And specifically, I'm referring to the control agreement, regulatory agreement, declaration of restrictive covenant and use agreements, ground lease and management agreement. Yep, leave it at that. Which are shared, which are not, and why not?
We have template documents on our website. So basically, any of the documents that govern our transactions are available for folks to see. But the one document that obviously residents are most attached to, of course, is their personal lease.
And so what, so actual documents are not shared? Is that what you're saying? You can see templates, but you can't see the actual documents exchanged between the PAC partner and NYCHA?
We have not released deal-specific documents at this time.
Why is that?
Largely because we want to be able to negotiate with each of our PAC partners and make sure we're getting the best deal for the city and for NYCHA.
Okay. Thank you. I will, I have a lot more questions about that, but I'll leave it at that. I guess my, my last two questions, one is regarding PAC partners that, that go bad, right? Relationships that sour. How many times has RAD, has NYCHA changed PAC partners and what has that process been? And the last set of questions that I, if the Chair would allow me, I'm sorry Chair, thank you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you, is regarding NYCHA employment, but bad PAC partners.
We have not yet initiated the removal of a PAC partner. We recently had an instance at Hope Gardens where the property manager was replaced. And that was a business decision that the development team at Penrose made as it relates to Pinnacle City Living.
Got it. Okay, so it wasn't the entire team?
No, it was just one.
It was just the property manager?
Party to the, to the joint venture.
Understood. And if there were something broader than that, there, are there clawback provisions that NYCHA has? And what do those look like? What do those processes look like?
I mean, it's very clearly stipulated in a number of our documents that if we are unsatisfied, we could initiate a process to remove our partners.
Okay. In documents that are not shared by the public, with the public? Okay. Okay, last, last question. I'm a champion for sharing what we can with the public so that there is more transparency and sunlight is the best disinfectant. Last question, and this is sort of looking back to the original mission at the founding of NYCHA, right? Stabilizing families in their homes, but also providing good-paying union jobs for the building trades. I know we can't say that in those terms nowadays, but it was concerning your answer to the Chair's question that no NYCHA union employees have stayed within their work sites. They have all transferred to other development, other developments. So question one is, has there been attrition, attrition of these union employees that were on NYCHA sites? Have they all transferred to, to other sites? And second, are there either local, local hire or union requirements for PAC-converted sites? And that is the conclusion of my questions.
Okay.
Councilmember, so just to clarify, I think the, so all of the employees at a site are offered the opportunity to stay on-site. However, most of them choose not to because they're city employees. They have municipal pensions, they have a lot of benefits, and they have a lot of time. And so the option to stay with their union, which is the Teamsters, which is a municipal union, most of them choose into that because they'd be giving up a lot of, a lot of benefits there. We have at Betancet's Houses, have the, the super retired from NYCHA and then stayed on with the property there, lent the rest partis, but in that situation, they didn't. The employees who, who work at the PAC sites are union employees. They are, you know, usually with private sector unions, like for instance, some are 32BJ, some are other, other different unions. But these are all, these are all union jobs. There are also Section 3 requirements, you know, at PAC sites, just like there are Section 3 requirements, you know, at NYCHA. And I would say, in many cases, the local hiring, they've been able to beat the numbers, you know, at the PAC sites than we have, you know, in the NYCHA traditional portfolio.
So Section 3 requirements transfer directly over to PAC sites?
That's correct.
As, as existing? Okay. Thank you so much for, for the permission, Chair, and thank you, NYCHA. Good to see you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now we're going to move to Councilmember Mealy.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow back on her question, Section 8 require, requirements, how many people from all the NYCHA developments have Section 3 jobs?
So all the NYCHA or the PAC, the PAC developments?
NYCHA.
I'm, I'm sorry, because we, we prepared for the PAC, but Councilmember, I can get you that.
But it's about the jobs. It seemed like all of a sudden now, Section 3, no one is getting those jobs. And it's supposed to be employee or constituents who live in NYCHA get these jobs.
Right.
It's like it's no documentation, or it seemed like it just stopped. So I go back on that. You don't have to answer that question. Could I get a yes or no answer in regards to if development do not want to do RAD and PAC? Yes or no, y'all would do it anyway, or no, you won't? Is that adequate?
No, we would not do it.
You would not do it? You sure?
We have, there have been instances where, in the process that I described, where, you know, we spoke with resident leadership, we spoke with the resident body, and there was no interest. And so we, as Brian said earlier, you know, we have a lot of other interests across the city, and so we will do those projects.
But could I ask you, so if it's only a certain group that is for it, and the majority of the tenants do not want it, so you go by the section of tenants who want it?
No, we work again.
Or whoever you have communication with?
No, we work with resident leadership and we have a open discussion with the resident body.
The tenant leadership is going rogue on their own, and they want RAD and PAC because maybe you promised them something, or, and the majority of the tenants don't want it, let me know.
What a.
Again, this is why we have meetings with the full resident body to gauge their interests. We don't rely just on the tenant association presidents.
So now, any development who do not want to get in RAD and PAC, you would not make them?
If we felt like there was a significant number of people who were not interested, we would not. And we have done.
So I have a few that's been calling me, so I will make sure we're going to stay on that route, that they do not want it. Okay, I just want to ask you another question. You said, how many times has NYCHA changed a PAC partner? You said you never did.
We have not initiated a change.
So, given the difficulties that Pinnacle City Planning had, is NYCHA confident enough that their abilities to continue to use them as a partner, as in West, West Brighton wanting to?
Yes.
You still feel they're on the job, but you just got rid of a manager?
Well, we didn't, as I mentioned, that was a decision that Penrose, the developer at Hope Gardens, made about Pinnacle City Living. Pinnacle has worked extensively with BFC, who is the developer for West Brighton. They have a longstanding relationship. They manage, Pinnacle manages many of BFC's, or a number of BFC's buildings. And so it appears that there is a good working relationship there, and we're confident we can move forward.
If the tenants would like them to cut tides with them, is it feasible?
It would be feasible. My understanding though.
You're here for the tenants, right?
Yes.
So if they come together and say they do not want that developer management, they can cut tides with them?
We would certainly, we would certainly be willing to hear from the residents. But I would say as it relates to West Brighton, my understanding is that Pinnacle has a very good relationship with the residents of West Brighton.
We could go back on that. Okay, just post-conversion oversight. What information is captured in the monthly reports by PAC developers that details high-risk repairs, such as mold, lead, elevators, heat, and hot water complaints?
It's the work orders. So whatever work orders have been submitted, we track the number of work orders and then the time to resolution for those work orders. And that's now on our dashboard on our website.
Okay, so I'm going to go back a little further. How was the implementation of picking these developers or these management, private management companies? Like Pinnacle and what's the next one, Fairfield?
Fairstead.
Fairstead. How did you choose Fairstead to get 18 developments in which they never did this before? Could you explain that?
So the process has evolved since we started PAC. In the beginning, NYCHA used to put out RFPs and we would jointly select.
So they won 16 RFPs?
No, I'm just describing.
I don't have that much time?
Okay.
Yes or no? How did, or just give me a brief synopsis.
So what we do.
How did 16 developments go to one private management?
So what we do today is we.
Because you didn't have a portfolio, because they never did this before.
Yes.
So how did you choose them?
Well, we pre-qualified developers, property managers, general contractors. And then we put out requests for expressions of interest. And we also put together resident review committees. And so since you're referring to Fairstead, I assume you're talking about Reed Park Rock. And so in that case, the residents co-selected the joint venture team that we, that we picked for this team.
I'm just speaking about in general, not Park Rock. I got other questions. I'd go second round for Park Rock. But how did you, as an agency, chose just one private company to do all these developments? They never had any experience on doing this. And I have an issue with, how many of them are doing the development or reconstruction of buildings and having this constituent stay in the building while they do the repairs? How many buildings you have it like that?
Well, so with the team that you're asking, with the team that you're asking about.
I'm not asking about the team. I'm just in regards to any private, the management company that is doing the redevelopment of any NYCHA developments. How many of them are having the constituents live there while they remodel?
They all have.
Do all these beautiful new kitchens, and they have to be in there with all that done? Do all these beautiful new kitchens, and they have to be in there with all that dust? How many? That's all I want to know.
I mean, they all have experience doing tenant-in-place rehab, even if they haven't done NITIA.
Tenant-place rehab is what? Are you moving them out of the building?
No, they're in the apartment.
So, don't you think it's best to do checkered board if so? Because I've done numerous of them. Instead of having constituents inside the building with all this mess, they have asthma, different health issues, they're gonna be in a building, in an apartment, that you're remodeling with all this dust. So, is there, could you give me a, how many that you moved into a hotel? Could you give me that?
We would have to provide that information.
So, it is some that need to go into a hotel?
Yes.
Because the reconstruction is really dusty and-
Yes, and they're-
So-
Councilmember, sometimes it's hotels, sometimes it is an available unit with, inside the development, and if residents do come to us and they say-
So, they have to come to you, you as a city agency, not thinking about the health of the constituents?
No, no, we, we have-
You don't think, would you want to live in somewhere that's being remodeled?
So, Councilmember, residents-
I tried it myself, it didn't work.
No, I hear you, I hear you. Yeah, residents volunteer their health relation, we cannot, we cannot demand that they give it to us, so-
Is it a budget for you to move them?
No, it's not, it's not a budget issue, you know?
No, I'm asking-
Yeah, yeah, it's not a budget issue whatsoever.
The management company do not have a budget that if it's egregious, you will move the tenant into a hotel, or if it's not enough vacant apartments, you would move them out?
It's not, it's not a budget issue whatsoever, so-
So, you do have a budget for that?
We do have a budget for that, correct.
Can you tell me how much? Because I believe, I know a lot of the constituents want to move out while you're doing the development.
That really, honestly, in, in our experience, that has not been the case. A lot of people, you know, tell us they want to stay in the development, they want to stay in their apartments. The reason being, a lot of people have, you know, if they have children, you know, they don't want to, they won't want to make sure that they move too far away from the development-
So, you can move to a, a nice hotel close?
We could, yeah, we definitely, we definitely could. And, and you know, especially when people have, you know, health issues, we want to make sure that the work is done safe.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
One more question.
Okay.
With Rad and PAC conversions, why are the apartments being smaller, the elevators are being smaller? Could you explain that?
I don't know, I'm not aware of apartments becoming smaller.
I'm gonna give you a list.
Okay.
It, it's sad, you're supposed to be enhancing, not taking away, and that's what's going on right now with the Rad and PAC conversion. So, I'll wait for the next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We will have another round. Councilmember Salamanca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. I want to start off by, so I have the third largest NITIA portfolio in the city of New York. I think Councilmember Darlene Mealy and Ayala have the two biggest before mine. I, I know that in my district, I'm going through a PAC on the Stevens Hewitt, and, look, I just want to say that it's not a one-size-fits-all. The PAC may not be appropriate for other buildings in my district, but the PAC that is currently occurring on Stevens and Hewitt, my constituents are extremely happy with the work that's being done. I can tell you that. For years, they went out with, you know, the winter, no, no heat, no hot water, leaks in their roof whenever it rained, it rained inside of their apartments, their windows not insulated appropriately, air coming in and out. This was the first winter where they thanked me for getting this work done, and I'm just, I just wanted to say thank you for that. But, as I said, that doesn't mean that the PAC will be appropriate for Melrose Houses or Jackson Houses, right? So, just, I just want to put that out there. Going back to what the Councilmember Darlene Mealy said, some of the frustrations while going through these renovations are, they came in at times unannounced, had to move their furniture around, kind of inconvenienced them, the dust, that did affect them. So, there are, I can say, certain situations, or maybe what I think that NITIA should do is look at what occurred so that we can fix these issues as you move forward in other PACs. So, with that, I'm gonna leave it at that. I want to talk about sidewalks. A homeowner, when you have a sidewalk, and your sidewalk is cracked, the Department of Transportation gives you time to fix it. If they don't fix it, if you don't fix it, you get a violation, and the Department of Transportation comes, fixes it for you, and they send you a bill. Your sidewalk, if you don't clean it, the Department of Sanitation comes in and gives you a violation, and they'll come back again. If it's not clean, they double your violation or your summons. I made a call the other day, because Forest Houses, their, their sidewalks are completely damaged, and the president of, of, of Forest Houses, you know, he, he's disabled, and he uses a wheelchair to get around. I made a call, and I asked, hey, we need to fix the sidewalk, and I sent pictures. There were holes on the sidewalk. How soon can we get the sidewalk fixed? And I was told that NITIA is not responsible for the sidewalk, that is the Department of Transportation. I want to know, why is it that a homeowner is responsible to fix their sidewalk? If they don't fix it, you get a violation by the Department of Transportation, but NITIA is not responsible to fix their sidewalk? I need an answer to that, because it just does not make sense.
Councilmember, thank you for the question. So, NITIA is responsible for the, the roadways and the, within the campus, and, you know, this, this predates me, you know, this goes back decades, and the sidewalks itself is the Department of, of Transportation. I cannot tell you why, we'd probably have to do some research, but, you know, I've been with NITIA now for 18 years, it's, it's been as long as-
Brian, you and I have a great relationship. I talk to you often, but it just does not make any sense. Why is a property owner, a building, or a homeowner responsible for their sidewalk, and NITIA is not responsible for their sidewalk? It's called common sense, like, that does not make sense. So, can we get the sidewalk fixed at Forest Houses?
We, I'll, I'll call you later, and then we can, we can look into that, yeah. I could, you know, I don't want to, I can't make a commitment here, but we could look into it. I'll call you.
All right. All right, Mr. Chair. I think maybe we should have a hearing on sidewalks.
We'll have a hearing on sidewalks.
See how we can fix our sidewalks at NITIA.
Hopefully, we'll get a better answer than a sidebar. All right, we're gonna go back to changing during conversions, and we want to get to rightsizing. What is the process for NITIA using rightsizing during the PAC conversion?
For rightsizing, we honor the public housing standards, because there is a slight difference between public housing and Section VIII. So, anyone who was in place at the time of the conversion, we honor the public housing occupancy standards, and we only require a rightsizing for those who do not meet that standard.
Okay, and what happens to families who are underoccupied units when there are no other units available in the dead development?
They are notified of the need to rightsize, and they are put on a list, so that the next time that a unit is available that meets the size that they need, they are notified that they need to transfer.
So, there's, there's no displacement?
No.
Okay. And are there reasonable accommodations given to elderly folks? Because I know we have a lot of seniors who are living in three or two-bedroom apartments. Are reasonable accommodations being given by the developers, or the new management company that's-
To remain in their current unit?
To remain in the current unit, in a three-bedroom apartment, are reasonable accommodations being given?
We are allowed to give reasonable accommodations, but not to, like, it can't be more than two bedrooms greater than what they need. So, the most that we could really do is offer one additional bedroom based on the accommodation, but we are not allowed to go larger than that.
So, would it be-
Just saying that you're a senior would not be, would not be grounds for reasonable accommodation. I think you would have to show a true health reason in order to remain in your apartment. The thing is, yes, we understand that a lot of residents, you know, see their apartment as a home because they've been in there for many decades, you know, their history is there, and we, we're totally sympathetic of that, but at the same time, we also have many families who are living in apartments where there's five or six of them in one-bedrooms who really need the, the bigger space. So, it is, you know, some, you know, we have to make sure that we get the proper size of families into the proper-sized apartments.
So, but are reasonable accommodations are given?
Reasonable accommodation is, is a thing that has to be, you know, something from a medical professional that shows a true medical need.
Okay, and if there's a situation where, say, for instance, it's not a senior, you, a particular situation where a, a, a person who was married, and the, the wife walked away, took the children, the father has remained in the apartment, what is done in a situation like that? Are they dragged into court?
No, first, when it's time for the, the household change to be reviewed, that person who remains will be notified that they need to rightsize. There is no court action at that point.
So, you, you would basically negotiate with them, or?
It's not a negotiation, it's really just an implementation of the HUD regulations concerning household sizes.
So, they, they wouldn't be dragged into court?
Not immediately, no.
But they will be dragged into court if they, if they decide not to leave the unit?
Then it can become a court issue if they refuse to leave the unit.
Okay, so, you, they possibly will, could possibly become homeless if they, if there's no place for them to go?
I would say, hopefully, everyone will comply, but if someone refuses to abide by the regulations that they've signed onto, then-
Well, I mean, but this is a situation where you have a person who is not part of the composition, but is, has been living in the apartment for the last 20 years. The, whatever the situation is with the wife, the wife left, took the children, now this particular individual's in the apartment, what, what is done to make sure that person doesn't become homeless and maintains the, the, the place where they're living at, and they've been also, they've been also continued to pay the rent?
So, I just want to clarify that the answer given before was based on someone legally being part of the household?
Right.
In your last part of your statement, you're saying the person was there but not-
Not part of the composition.
So, we do have a program where we, where we view-
Right.
-the circumstances, and we do it on a case-by-case basis to try to preserve that tendency.
So, they, okay, so, in a situation like that, would there be a negotiation with the tenant? Would there be any conversations that will make sure that that tenant doesn't become homeless?
It's a case-by-case basis, and our intent is always to preserve the tendency. So, if we are able to, we will.
So, when it comes to oversight and NITIA's role, when it comes to a controversy like that, who's the lead person, or who is there, who, who, who steps in in a situation like that?
The Leasen Housing Department will review, we will work with the family, we will work with onsite management to gather as much information as possible to come to a final determination on that tendency.
Okay, what, what information about underoccupied units is given to the PAC developer during the conversion?
During the conversion process, everything is given regarding legal logs, like court actions, who the last, who the occupants are, the known occupants are. Anything else? The rent roll, sorry.
And what happens to families who are in an underoccupied unit when there are no other units available in the development?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What happens to a, to families who are in under, underoccupied units when there are no other units available in the development?
They would go onto a list and considered according to that list whenever vacancies occur.
So, they would have to go on a list?
Yes, because at the, in the entire development, we are, we are looking at everyone who is either under or overoccupied. So, as units become available, then management is notified, here's the next people on the list who need to rightsize.
And when it comes to rightsizing, we know that there are some developments where there are only X amount of one-bedrooms, and I think, I just want to get this on the record again, it is the policy of NITIA that a, until an appropriate apartment becomes available, then the person will be moved? Or the, okay, just want to make this. When it comes to ticket tracking and repairs, working during the PAC process, what is the current system in place for ticketing, tracking repair work and service tickets during the PAC process?
Do you mean post-construction, or post-conversion, when the PAC partner's taken over?
Oh, yes.
So, the different PAC partners, you know, they use their own property tracking software, and we require them to provide us with a summary of their, their data. So, we take in all the data and put it into a form that then ends up on our website, but they all have their, their own systems that they use.
Is it at their discretion on when they implement a ticket, ticketing system or tracking system?
I mean, a lot of them have established systems that they've been using separate from NITIA, so it is simpler for them to just continue to use the different ticketing systems that they use in their other portfolios to bring over to the NITIA system.
Well, I know there's been instances where some management companies have not instituted a ticketed system, and, well, let me say this, they've taken two years or so to introduce a ticketed system, and it's been very chaotic, and even after they've introduced the ticketed system, there's still, you know, repairs are still not being met, and there's still major issues that are not, not, basically, are not being addressed by the, by the new management.
Okay, I would be interested to follow up specifics on, on that with you.
Also, tenants have described that once a development begins the PAC process, repairs at the development tend to slow down or stop altogether, and are left for when the conversion process commences. What work is still being done by NITIA, and what work is left to be undone by the PAC partner?
So, NITIA remains responsible for all of the properties and all of the repairs right up until the date of conversion. It is, so it is our expectation that work would not slow down, and so, to the extent that we are made aware of any issues, we will sort through that and make sure that work happens.
What happens to ongoing work already underway?
It would have to be completed.
So, does NITIA complete it, or does the new management, or is there a, because we're talking about transitioning, is there a smooth transition? Because I've seen situations and heard of situations where basically NITIA just, you know, disappeared, and that has happened in, in a couple of developments that, that, that are in my district, where even the developers said that they just, they, they just gave us the key and disappeared.
Well, again, that is not what is supposed to happen, and I'm, I'm not sure if you're asking about, you know, work orders that residents have been filing in their specific apartments or other types of projects, but certainly-
Well, it's a combination of the two, work orders and also projects that are being undertaken by NITIA at the time of the conversion.
So, work orders, you know, they should be addressed in real time as they're being filed by residents right up until the closing, and NITIA should complete those. As it relates to larger potential capital projects, you know, one of the things that we try to do is make sure that, you know, if we think a project can be done by NITIA before the conversion happens, and it makes sense for the longevity of the project, then that project would go forward. If we think it makes more sense for the PAC partner to take over a piece of work, like, like, say, replacing boilers or what have you, we would then ask the PAC partner to do that work if it makes more sense for them to do it than us.
Okay. Let me move on to employment at PAC developments, which is, to me, very important. At Linden and Boulevard Houses, which are in my particular district, two developments that recently transitioned from public housing to PAC, not most recently, but a couple of years back, how many NITIA employees did these developments have before the conversion?
We could get you that information, we can give you a before and after.
And how, how many PAC employees are now at these sites?
Again, we could get you the before and after.
Okay, I, I just want to get these questions out. Do PAC employees have similar job benefits to public housing employees? And if not, what are the key differences?
I think there's a lot of similarities. As Brian mentioned, these are unionized jobs, so I think there's certainly some similarities. I would not know all of the differences between the roles, or in terms of the- I would not know all of the differences between the roles or in terms of the benefits, but I think they're fairly comparable.
Again, I think it's different unions, different companies, so it's not exactly the same, but I think it is certainly very...
Well, basically, a housing assistant would be, would be the same as a housing assistant under the new manager, right? What would be the, what would be the difference? That's a simple question.
I think we can get you, also, I think we can get you the starting, you know, at each, you know, starting salary of each, but, you know, Nitra employees tend to, you know, stay for quite some time. You know, a housing assistant could make, you know, you know, the, the salary would be quite different, you know, but we, we could look for starting in both, both sites.
Well, I guess this question hits on what Councilmember Sanchez had brought up. Does Nitra track the union membership or local hiring of the PAC developers against what they propose or promise to the developer's selection process?
We do, we do track the local hiring, we do track the Section 3 hiring. And also too, can I just clarify something I had said earlier too? I just want to make sure too, the Section 3 rules apply, you know, to the construction under, you know, PAC sites, you know, just as they do in Nitra, but not, you know, moving, not on all hiring.
Do they apply, so they don't apply to the management?
Post, post-convert.
Post-convert.
Yes, post-conversion, but, but that is not to say that, you know, many of the partners haven't found local hiring to be beneficial and even though it's not a requirement, it's not something that they don't do.
What is Nitra doing as far as oversight? Say particularly in a development where there has been no local hiring or the developer chooses not to do the local hiring? Wha, wha, I mean, how do you bring them into compliance?
I mean, there's not an option to not participate, they have to make every effort to...
Well, I can give you a, a list of developments where there has been no local hiring at all and it has been an abysmal approach taken by the management company. They say that they've put out a couple of flyers, but no true real engagement, even with the Tenant Association, to, to have local hiring. And keep in mind, in my district, we've had close to a little over a billion dollars that has passed through, through four developments, through rehab and, or the construction piece, and there was no local hiring done within the last four years or subcontracting. So we've, we've asked the developer, you know, to provide us with information or numbers. To this day, nothing, so maybe you can probably do some oversight over that and see if you can get those numbers for us.
Okay.
Because we need to know, unemployment is high in my district, especially in Nitra, and there's no reason why residents shouldn't have been, have been working or have, have had some type of business opportunities with all this money that has passed through, through, through these particular developments and possibly throughout the city.
Absolutely.
Regarding, and also too, can we get a breakdown of the unions that are, that have been, that are being used, that are being used by these particular development companies?
Yes.
And also the numbers on union, union positions that are, that are, that are on, on these particular sites? Now, I'll move on to post-conversion oversight. What information is captured in monthly reports by PAC developers that details high-risk repairs such as mold, lead, elevator heat, and hot water complaints?
So it's the same as the period during construction, so all of the work orders that are filed. You know, we get that monthly reporting, so we know how many have been create, how many work orders have been created and we track both the number, the quantity, but also the time to resolution.
So how do you, how does Nitra verify that these reports are accurate? What system is in place?
Well, you know, we also make sure that our residents are satisfied, right? Like if, if our, we rely in part on residents confirming...
What's the system that's in place?
Well, right now, it's really based on the information that comes from the developers.
How do you engage the residents to get that information?
Well, we often will hear from them if they feel like it hasn't been resolved in time.
So there's no outreach?
And Brad?
So just, just one second, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
And if you could just identify yourself and your title for the record?
I'm Brad Greenberg, the Chief Compliance Officer at Nitra. Just to, there are systems that we have in place in really key areas to confirm that the work is being done, including with field inspections and talking to residents. I want to talk about a couple of them for you, Chair. One is the reports that come in from the PAC developer on mold and leaks. If the work order exceeds a 30-day period, it comes directly to my department, to the Compliance Department, from the Real Estate Department. And then we have a process in place where we take each work order and we chase down information about it. We both call the resident themselves and ask them about the status of the work in their apartment. And we also ask for an update from the developer. If we're not satisfied either with generally how the developer's responding or the residents detailed reporting to us about the work order in their unit that exceeded 30 days, we go and do a visit ourselves. So we've gone to a lot of properties throughout the portfolio just to see the quality of the work, see whether or not the work should be getting done. If we find that it's not getting done, we have a protocol in place to issue a notice of noncompliance, which would trigger a housing quality standards inspection by at least Housing Department to suspend subsidies. So that's what we do on the mold and leak front. We also have a third-party environmental firm that goes out related to lead-based paint. And if we are told that there is an issue responding to a complaint around that, we send that inspector out, you know, to go do a full evaluation. We also might ask for clearance reports or other things that we need from the developer. So there are systems that we've put in place in the last few years to try to understand whether or not the work's being done properly.
How many times has Nitra identified issues with a PAC partner for being noncompliant?
You know, so we, we are working with them every day, like we, before this committee hearing, I was on the phone.
Can you give me your number?
It's, it's hard to say exactly because...
Well, can you get that, can you get that to us?
The number is how many times we've found them.
You've found a, a PAC partner in noncompliant?
Yeah, we've, we've done multiple instances of that. It's really not so simple of like whether you're noncompliant or not. Our goal is to get the residents satisfied with the work in their apartment, so we get to that point. And that's what we're trying to chase.
Well, I mean, the reason why I ask that, because if, if, if there's a multitude of situations where the PAC partners found noncompliant, then we know, you know, they're obligated to provide these services to the tenants.
We just...
So we need to track to see, you know, if this is really working. And, and that's the reason why we need to know exactly how many have been found or have not been found noncompliant.
Absolutely.
Nitra has now put out some information on the Nitra website, website about PAC partner performance. Is there any data or information being collected that is not on the dashboard?
I mean, I think that's a very, what's on the website is obviously aggregated, as was mentioned before, but it basically encapsulates the bulk of what we collect from our PAC partners.
So what steps does Nitra take when data shows poor performance of the PAC partner?
Well, you know, Brad just explained part of it as it relates to his work and we follow a similar procedure. If it's, you know, if it's a set of issues that are within the real estate's realm, you know, we, what we want to do is get to resident satisfaction. So we will be working with the PAC partner and the residents to make sure that whatever the issue is, is being resolved.
On the PAC dashboard, Nitra describes tendency proceeding status with pre eviction outreach, cases initiated and evictions. Do PAC partners provide any other data about outcomes of outreach or initiation such as the number of households entering payment plans or the number of households who self, who self-evac or leave prior to a pre eviction or to a pre, pre eviction?
Yes, we require our PAC partners to share with us, you know, the names and numbers of all of the households that are in pre eviction outreach. And all, as well, they have to provide us with detailed notes on, you know, the nature of the issues and the steps that they have been taking to communicate with residents and put those residents into, to connect residents with the relevant resources to try to rectify the issue.
Okay, and the services, any services the developer or nonprofit provides for development connected to household? What are the services that are being provided?
Well, one, something that comes up a lot is if a resident is having trouble paying rent and it's due to a change in income. Oftentimes, folks don't, perhaps don't realize that they can recertify. So just, just taking the step of making sure that the resident recertifies their income and then they can have their rent recalculated. So it's things like that, really understanding what the nature of the issue is and then figuring out what is the best strategy for helping them out.
Who provides the oversight over the non-for-profit or the community-based organization that's providing the social services?
It is the, it is, they are governed by, by the joint venture team primarily and, you know, we have some oversight over them as well.
The, particularly the work scope. Some of the nonprofits or CBOs who are providing services or say they're providing services, for some reason, they have, like I know one particular non-for-profit or CBO that, that is providing services at Linden Houses. They basically, their work scope is dedicated to benefits and I guess assisting folks with rent, rent arrears. But when I questioned them on workforce development, they said that wasn't part of their, their scope. So, and I think that that goes back to the, the oversight and making sure that therefore, these developers or management companies form compliance with the Section 3. Why are they not hiring nonprofits or CBOs that are also providing or assisting with workforce development?
Well, the social service plans vary by development to development and what we've tried to do is allow those plans to be developed and tailored to the needs of each community. So that is what, that is the approach. That's why you will see some variation from development to development. But, you know, if there is a need that's not being met at any particular site, we can certainly discuss revisiting what social services are being provided.
Do you have a list of all of the CBOs or social service providers that are in...
Yes, we can provide that.
Thank you. And actually, when it comes to the, their contracts, is the Tenant Association involved in that process? And helping to make sure a situation that's going on like in Linden Houses doesn't take place where they're, they're providing work to the tenants? Well, basically, they're providing services to tenants that, not say they're not needed, but where they should be providing other services?
Yes, we do rely on, you know, the insight and the expertise of the Tenant Association President and Leadership to tell us what they think the needs are. So again, if there are, as the projects evolve and as things change on the campuses over time, if there are new needs that come up, we can certainly talk about what the social service program would look like.
So resident engagement is key and important. One of the things that we constantly see is that what you said is not what's actually being done. So if we can get clarity or just get a straight answer more as to why we have developments or CBOs coming into Nitra developments under RAD PAC that have not been any engaged, where there's been no engagement with the Tenant Association in the beginning stages to make sure that the CBO that is coming is meeting the needs and desires of the, of the, of the, of the development?
Yes.
Yes, we're going to go forward with another round of us hogging the mic for a little. We're going to go back to our, we're going to go to our second round of questioning, questions by our committee members and we're going to begin. We're going to go to Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chair. That is the Chair's privilege, so that's, that's just what you do, okay? Thank you, so my, my first question is a local one and I'm looking at you, Leroy. Because, you know, just in case this is happening in other, in other conversions. So I have the Northwest Bronx bundle, it's not 100% in my district, but it's pretty much very close to 100% in my district. Almost all of my Nitra buildings, with the exception of Marble Hill, are undergoing conversions. And in one of my sites, we have a tenant association that we were told by the tenants was dissolved. They are having internal issues and Nitra appears to make that choice, you can confirm that for me. But in, in these cases, and I know this has been an ongoing conversation between my office and Nitra, where tenant leadership is not, you know, there is not the formal board. There, it's been a question for me, what is Nitra's approach rather, you know, other than just blanketing the, the whole building and inviting everyone to information sessions? What is the participation in the leadership, the steering of the conversion process by the tenants, right? I, I'm concerned about how, how residents' concerns and their voices are reflected when they don't have a formal TA or where they have a dysfunctional TA or where, you know, for, for whatever reason, the average tenant is not really privy to what's going on. So can you just share about what is Nitra's approach in these kind of situations? How do you ensure that Nitra and the development team, the PAC partner, are hearing from all of the voices and all of the concerns?
Yeah, so our approach again is, like you said, is to make sure all residents know the same thing. Nitra's job is to make sure we have the withdrawal recognition from that particular association. We'll be meeting with the residents to see if we can start a new association at that particular development. But again, we want to make sure from top bottom that all residents receive the same information and we're there to assist in any way as possible.
Okay, all tenants receive the same information, but there is a steering committee that is, that is sort of, you know, they're, they sign NDAs, they're, they're not able to disclose what is happening in those meetings. So in the case of my buildings, there are buildings that are not represented.
So if there ever is a development where there's no resident associations, we select residents that seem like they want to be a part of the process. So it will never be a point where we don't have residents as part of this committee to select a developer.
And what is, what are the responsibility, responsibilities of those residents to inform the rest of the Nitra residents within that building?
Do you want to take this, responsibilities?
In terms of selecting? Well, the residents review the proposals that we get from PAC partners. They also interview PAC partners. We take residents on tours of PACs, existing PAC sites and they co-select with us.
But do they have any responsibilities to keep their neighbors informed about what's going on in the process?
No, we don't expect that specifically of them. Obviously, that would be helpful, but we know that that is our responsibility.
So the, the responsibility of Nitra?
Yes.
Yes.
And the PAC partner? I'm sorry, Chair, if I, if I may.
No, you may.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Okay, so thank you, thank you for those responses and I'll continue to follow up with my, my tenants in particular because it is concerning. I have questions about who's at the table representing hundreds of apartments that are, you know, don't have a TA leadership and don't have anyone right now. So regarding transfers, Legal Services of New York City has reported that following a building's conversion under RAD PAC, tenants lose their ability to transfer unless their desired building is a part of the same bundle owned and managed by the same private landlord and company, which is in fact, in, in turn, limiting their ability to transfer outside of, say, Northwest Bronx bundle, to transfer outside that bundle and is limiting their, their, you know, privileges, if you will, as compared to Nitra residents. So that is one way that the, you know, privileges of a Nitra residency are different under PAC. So given these concerns, we've, we've heard of tenants who, you know, were on the waitlist for a very long time, you know, wanted to have an accessible unit and they were waiting and their, their building was converted. Is Nitra considering allowance of families that are staying with, that have been on waitlist before the transfer? Is Nitra considering allowing them to stay on the waitlist or is there any policy that is being considered to accommodate such families?
As it relates to their Section 8 tendency, after a year, all residents in place... As it relates to their Section 8 tenancy, after a year, all residents in place can request a housing choice voucher to relocate anywhere in the United States where there's another public housing agency. So there, there is a broader accessibility to house, affordable housing throughout the country. We are also discussing a plan to consider transferring to other PAC developments. Right now, there is no mechanism. HUD does not permit anyone to transfer from a Section 8 unit over to Section 9. You can't do that under HUD regulations.
Got it, thank you. And I, you know, understood that you can transfer with, with a voucher. Has NYCHA made any requests to have an exception to this rule? At least during, you know, the first year, the first two years, whatever timeframe?
Exception to what rule? I'm sorry.
That you cannot transfer from Section 8 to Section 9.
Not that I'm aware of, but we can get back to you on that.
If you have not made that request, is that something that NYCHA would consider?
It is, we are looking at, we, we've heard this and we've heard this from the, the group that you had mentioned and also from residents. It is something that we acknowledge is an issue, but not an issue to solve, easy issue to solve. But we, we, we would definitely consider and listen to ways to try to solve for it.
Okay, thank you. I know you have a great relationship with your regional secretary, right? Former Chair of the Public Housing Committee here, Lisa Empress Samuel. Last, last question, this, this might be a TBD, but does NYCHA have anything to share regarding how the mayor's city of yes proposals will impact either PAC campuses or NYCHA campuses? That's it Chair.
I think that's TBD.
Thank you. Look forward to the discussion.
Thank you Councilmember Sanchez. Now we're gonna go allow Councilman Darlene Millie.
Okay, I just want to go back to the beginning. Maybe I missed something. Why did NYCHA go to Section 9 when you say Section 8 is the same thing?
So they're not the same. So Section 9 was the, is what we, you know, refer to as traditional public housing, right? So that was the original program that was created in the 1930s.
Don't give me the history now, let's.
Sure, no, okay, you're right. And, you know.
How's it different?
How's it different? Okay, so the Section 8 program was a program that was created by, again, by the, it is a federal subsidy and it comes in two different ways. Either voucher-based program, where the tenant is given a voucher, they're, they're meant to go out and find an apartment.
But why didn't keep Section 8?
There is more funding in, in Section 8.
It's more funding in Section 8?
Correct, that is correct.
So why not keep that?
Well, so that's what we're, basically what we're doing is we're going to where the funding is, right? So the funding is in Section 8?
So you are thinking about discontinuing Section 9?
No, I, I think the, the goal is to preserve the housing stock. The, the funding right now is within Section 8.
I, I gotta understand, Section 8, you say it has more money.
That's correct.
Why did, who bright idea was to go into Section 9? If this was already sustainable to NYCHA and to the tenants?
So Section 9 was the original program, the program that was created, you know, the public housing program, right? And Section 8 was created in 1970s?
Yes.
As a, as a program. It, it does, but NYCHA had to, number one, we had to convert our properties in order to become a Section 8.
Was that the requirement?
In your district, we did this 10 years ago. It was one of the first, even predates Rad at Saratoga. And it's held up really well. I mean, Saratoga is, you know, Saratoga.
So far.
Senior, senior development, yeah. 10 years later, we're seeing that, you know, the seniors still are really happy there. And the reason we were able to do that is we converted from Section 9 to Section 8. We received more subsidy. We were able to bring back more improvements. And, you know, I remember, you know, working with the tenants there, you know, at the time and I've gone back recently and still proud to say that it looks really nice.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, Park Rock, I gotta say, I just was over there and it's a big tree that fell the last storm and it's still there. And I called numerous times and now I concur with my colleague, Salamanca. I get tickets in front of my house. Why NYCHA is not taking that up? And guess what? Why was there? It was a blind, it's a impaired man. He was trying to get into his cab. The construction workers and everyone is trying to help him maneuver over that tree. So if he would have fell in front of a NYCHA building, who would that would have been responsible? NYCHA, Parks Department, who else I called? City, but you, it's right in front of your building. Who would have been responsible? It's a big tree trunk. I got the pictures.
Well, you mentioned that it was Reed Park Rock, so.
Reed Park Rock, yes.
If you could give us the address, we will reach out to the development team.
It's Reed Park Rock, Rochester and Park Place.
Okay. I mean, the development team.
And it's, now it's been a week and a half I've been calling, trying to get rid of that tree.
Okay.
But if someone get hurt, it's on record that we have to do something. And I pray that, I'm gonna start brainstorming with my colleague, that we get a bill in place that maybe y'all should, because if someone tripped, are you responsible in front of any NYCHA developments?
Well, again, this is a site that's converted, so.
But in general, any NYCHA building?
Brian, do you want?
Hi Brian.
How are you, Councilmember? So yeah, so the responsibility for the sidewalks that, you know, just the general sidewalk is Department of Transportation?
If someone fall in front of NYCHA?
I don't know the tort responsibility there. I'm, I'm not an attorney, but, you know, but I'm just saying the responsibility of, you know, fixing it is on the Department of Transportation.
Oh right, DOT.
And, for instance, like in one of your larger developments like Van Dyke Houses where you have the road, you have the pathways that are on the property, that is our responsibility. But the, but the street itself is Department of Transportation. But I don't know, you know, I don't know when it comes to court, you know, who, that, you know, you know, that person would.
I got one more question.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. How many PAC partners do you have for the five boroughs? Could you give me four names?
Just the names or the numbers?
Give me the numbers first, thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, we can get you a list of.
Right, but I just want to know how many?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. We, because it depends on if you're counting the developers, general contractors, but we have.
Just the PAC partners who you, well, the city have given, NYCHA developments to the partners. I know I have one management company have 13, I think. So that must be going on around the whole city. So I just want to know about how many do you have?
We have a.
That you city turn over to?
We have a complete list on our website and we can send it to you directly. That has every single project and all of the different partners that make up each team at each project. So you can see total number of developers, the total number of property managers, the total number of general contractors at each of the sites. And you can see, you know, all the different projects.
How many is minority?
A significant proportion. We require that every team has an MWBE or a nonprofit and that they have a meaningful role in each project. So.
So I'm gonna go back and do that research, because it seemed like no one locally is working in our communities. When I went there that day, it was no African-American, no Latino, well, it was all Latino. But where are the minorities getting some of these jobs?
Again, we'll send you the list and every team is required to have MWBE participation. And as I mentioned, we have to, they have to provide meaningful roles for each of the MWBEs.
And for these Section 3 jobs, how are you informing the residents of the NYCHA developments about? Do they have to have an OSHA training certificate? Or they could just come in and see a flyer and then apply? Because I haven't seen any. And one person you know that is, and that's, he's in your district, the TA president, Arthur Warren. He's been harassing every council member in regards to these Section 3 jobs and no one is getting, they used to get these jobs. TA president had the latitude to give these jobs to people who live in NYCHA. And all of a sudden now, not one person getting a job. That has to be addressed Chair.
Yep, and I think this is one of the areas where the social service provider really helps in terms of getting, you know, residents either ready to do the work, because each job requires.
So they have to have an OSHA training?
It depends on the job. It depends on, you know, so some jobs do have state law that require OSHA, you know, OSHA requirements, some don't. And so I think, you know, working with the social service provider, it is important for.
So you don't work with the TA presidents?
Oh, you know, yeah, of course, but you're together.
Is there anything in place that they at least get 10 people from their NYCHA development that should get on that, the site if billions of dollars is coming through their neighborhood?
I think, you know, we have, in, you know, in many cases.
Something is wrong with this.
We can give you a list of, you know, if by development, the number of residents have been hired. I think what we want to do is we want to make sure we hire as many people as possible, many people who are qualified as possible. But we don't want one or two or even three people controlling the process.
No, wait, do you know how much money is coming through Brownsville and every part of this city? We are just asking if the TA president could have, they did it before, have a list of people in the community or in their development that is qualified. You said some of those jobs, you don't have to have a college degree. I feel you did it before, because I know the TA presidents had the latitude to at least hire five or six or 10 people. It's not that you've given them jobs automatically. They are making sure the people are in compliance. Why can't that be done? If you want to partner with the TA presidents? Because it's not fair to them that all this money is coming through, all this development is coming through the neighborhood and no one they know are working. Not one person.
So Leroy Williams, Vice President of Resident Services. So we do work with the resident associations.
So what is the breakdown that not one person can get a job?
As John said, we will get you that information, but I just want to be clear that we do make sure that the resident association along as, also the residents overall knows what, you know, jobs are available through the Section 3 and overall. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
How do you post a job avail, I know we gotta go over. How do you post a job?
So it really depends on the site. We work with our social services providers and also our developers in NYCHA.
Do you send an email to all the tenants, presidents, all the tenants?
Again, it depends on the outreach for that specific on development. So we try to make sure in different ways. So sometimes, yes, we do some emails, we do post, we put on door-to-door flyers, so it does vary.
What was the last building you did that? And that's my last question, because I go, I'm, I would like to go over to that building and see where it was posted.
No problem. My colleague, Michael, will respond.
Hi.
Just one second. Could you raise your right hand? Do you affirm and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee? And to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do. And my name is Michael Parkinson. I'm the Director of Community Planning in NYCHA Real Estate. Thank you for the, the question, Councilmember. It is a fair one. Just really quickly, I, I do want to just, for the record, state the number of hires that we have made through the Section 3 requirement at our projects where construction is completed. At Ocean Bay, we've hired 102 Section 3 residents. Baychester Murphy's 50, Patansus 52, Brooklyn Bundle 144, Hope Gardens-Bushwick Bundle 38, Twin Parks West and Hybridge Franklin 28, and the Manhattan Bundle 140. So in total, just on those projects alone, we've hired well over 500 Section 3 hires.
Do you have the breakdown of the?
We do have those broken down by project. I believe those are even in the tracker that is posted online. But, but I just want to share too, because your question was about engagement and how residents come to find out about these opportunities. At each of our projects, our team and Leroy's team and others, we work with our development partners and the tenant associations to craft detailed resident engagement guidelines and roadmaps. And part of that, a large part of that, is on notifying residents of hiring opportunities and training opportunities.
All right, trick, trick, trick question. Park Rock is under development right now. How many people from the community receive jobs? And that's it.
Yeah, I think we can get back to you with the numbers so far, but it's also under construction.
It's in play right now. These you said already done. We could go back. But this, you should have accurate information now, because it's in play right now. So I went there, I didn't see anyone look like me.
Understood. Well, I, I can say as of, as of now, we have over 47,000 labor hours, Section 3 labor hours at Reed Park Rock. If, if we can, if we can break that down, we will. I'm not sure how to do that.
What's your first name again?
Michael.
Michael, so I speak to you offline. Thank you, thank you. And you've been very helpful, Mr. Brian. Thank you. But I'm looking forward to having a power offline. Thank you. Thank you Chair for the.
Thank you Darlene, Councilmember Millie, sorry about that. John, we know you have to leave. You're excused. Thank, well, no, we're not done with the panel, just John. We have a couple of more questions. Brian, we gonna make you work today. I need to know, how many options are residents given in reviewing PAC partners? How many options?
Sorry, I was starting to pack up. Can you repeat that question?
How many options are residents given to review PAC partners?
So typically, about three to four, maybe three to five teams will respond to a request for expressions of interest. And then those proposals will be, proposals from those teams will be presented to residents for their review and consideration.
Who makes the final decision?
It's a joint decision between the residents and NYCHA.
How is that process done?
Actually, turn it over to Michael, who works with residents during that particular stage.
Thank you, appreciate the question. Well, the process has evolved over time. So it looks a lot different now than it did two years ago and even, I think, before that, we weren't even doing the same process. And really, we defer to the needs of the residents. We, we make a lot of options available to them with respect to various meetings to go over the proposals that have been submitted. We can break down the components of those proposals, meeting by meeting, whether it's the scope of work that's being proposed, the type of management plan that's in place, potential so, social service partners. We work with resident, we call them resident advisors. These are technical support consultants that we provide to the residents to support them through this process. And we get residents comfortable with the proposals to a point where they then interview all of the prospective development teams. And the residents lead these interviews. They work with their technical assistance providers to prep for questions, prod them on certain things. They, they definitely ask the hard questions with respect to some of the history and experience that these partners provide. Following those interviews, oftentimes residents will suggest going on tours of, of sites that these partners have completed, work that they've done, so they can, they can see for their own eyes the quality of craftsmanship and work that the partners are able to bring to the table. Following that step, there are oftentimes the need for more questions. And we'll go back to the partners with questions developed from the residents in writing to our.
Okay, thank you. Back to my original question, who makes the final decision? Is this decision, because it seems like, you know, what you said is all good and dandy, but it still didn't answer my question. Are the tenants truly involved in the process of picking these developers?
Yes, yes they are. Absolutely.
Okay. So if the tenants are involved, why is it that after, and we got, we have multiple situations or conversions that have taken place where residents said they didn't even know that they were even being privatized or this particular program was coming to their development?
So this, you know, Michael had referred to the fact that the program has evolved over the years and I was starting to describe this earlier. When we started the program in 2019, NYCHA would put out requests for proposals and solicit proposals from the development community and we would review and make the selections. Over time, you know, we recognized that resident engagement was of critical importance. So with every. So with every round that we've been doing since 2019, we've been expanding the role of the residents. So yes, there's certainly a disconnect in some ways because some of the earlier projects did not have the same kind of resident engagement that we do today.
So now at Bayview Houses, they're a pretty new, they're going to actually be, they're going to be converted and they're in their early stages.
Yes.
Will the tenants have a vote or a say in the new developers?
They, yeah, they have, they have selected a developer there. And in fact, I attended the meeting with Ms. Boyce, the new development team and all the elected officials, including Councilmember Narcissus, Chief of Staff, at the community center. I will tell you, it was a very emotional meeting because the tenants and the, and the develop, the development team, you know, had been working together for so many months and they were so happy to be, you know, really partners in this process. And they were very proud to like stand there and tell the elected officials that they all believed that they made the right choice.
Let me ask you this. How many developers were in the process?
For that development, and Mark, Michael, I know you were more...
Was it one? Was it two? Was it three?
There, I believe there were four total.
There were four developers. How did, how were the four developers selected?
Going through that process I described previously.
So the...
You mean the four development teams?
How were the four developers selected to be placed before the tenant association or the tenants?
Well, we, Jonathan, I don't know if you want to just, we issued a request for expression of interest describing the project and the requirements. And of the pre-qualified development partners, general contractors, property managers who get pre-qualified annually, teams were formed at their own discretion and they chose, those partners chose to submit proposals for the Bayview project.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask, does the implementation of the Department of Investigations, the 14 recommendations that were given, have, are they being, are they bearing any or anything as far as the NITIA selection process for the PAC, for PAC partners? Is there any? You want me to ask that question?
No, no, I think it's a different issue, and so the answer is no. It's, it's, it's not, that was on micro purchasing and this is on development selection.
Well, I'm saying that as far as the, the selection process, is there anything, any of the recommendations or that were recommended, are they, are they being used in this particular selection process to, to avoid?
So the 14 recommendations from DOI were about the micro purchase program?
Correct.
At NITIA managed properties, which are $10,000 or less purchases for services. This is obviously a very different program. It's a program that Jonathan, like he says, he has a pre-qualified list. It's a procurement process that has requests, requests for expressions of interest. It's a totally different procurement model. So DOI recommendations really have no relationship at all with this.
Well, I think the point we get into on this is more the contractors or, or selection of contractors.
It's a completely different type of contract.
What's the, what's that process look like and what oversight is NITIA doing on the selection of contractors? So, because we, you know, we, basically, as we speak right now, we, there's no type of financial accountability to this council as to how much money is being spent, who's being hired, who's getting the contracts. So to avoid a situation where we have a bunch of developers being dragged, dragged out in handcuffs, what, what's being put in place by NITIA so we know where the money's, where the money's going? What's the process of folks being, being brought on as far as contractors and there's no quid pro quo? Is everything is being done above?
Right. So like Jonathan mentioned, the way that the PAC process works is you have a lead developer, but you also have general contractors who have some of their own subcontractors as well, who do the construction. It's a totally different pool of vendors than the pool of vendors that do a $10,000 or less type of micro purchase at a NITIA managed property. So I don't think the risks are quite the same, just, just as a baseline foundational thing.
Well, are the tenants, are the tenants engaged in the process of helping select?
Yeah, the general contractor is a part of the development team from the outset. So that general contractor gets put through the same selection process with the rest of the team.
Are the tenants involved in the process of selecting contractors?
That's the process that Michael was talking about, where they have a selection process and the general contractors.
Well, I mean, no, we, we get the actual, the developers, but when it get, when we get to the nitty gritty of now hiring, for simple example, someone who's going to put the doors on, the company who, where they, the company where they purchase the doors, where they get the tolerables, the supplies. Is there a process put in place by NITIA where the tenants can weigh in on it and, and give their input so we're not getting in a situation where we've seen in, in Linden houses where met, where the current management company or the current developers or construction company is going ahead, they're putting on doors, they're putting on slam locks on doors where the tenant association in this situation has told them repeatedly, slam locks won't work in Linden houses, but the management goes ahead and, well, the developers go ahead and they purchase all these doors with slam locks and there's been massive lockouts. And I think that was mentioned earlier by one of the tenants. But what process is put in place? Because this goes back to my general point. If the tenants are engaged early, and I guess this is the reason why I kind of fundamentally disagree with the RAD PAC program, if the tenants are not engaged and they're not at the table, we're going to have situations where purchases are being made that are not in line with what the tenants want. And these are the folks that live there. So these are, this, you know, the, the, the management company and the developers that are coming in to develop the property need to make sure that they're listening, and not just listening, but that they're, they're, they're following the instructions of the tenants when it comes to what they want in their apartments.
Yeah.
And we're not seeing that.
I agree with you, Chair. I personally have attended construction meetings with TA presidents and the contractor and heard the back and forth myself individually, including at Linden. But I hear you that it needs to be more, and I think Jonathan can certainly take that forward.
Well, the reason why I bring this up is because, you know, we, you have another 37,000 units that you're going to put into a RAD. And we need to make sure that these, the safety nets are put in. So that's the reason why, hence this hearing, because for the last units that we, that have gone on the RAD, we haven't seen that. And, and particularly, we can point out, as it was pointed out by my colleague, there are six, some successful RADS. I know in Florentino Houses, the gut rehab was done pretty well. But when it comes to the in-place rehabs, they've been an abysmal failure in my district.
Counsel member, or Chair, just to, to, I want to reiterate a couple of the points that were made earlier and respond to the, I think, the question around the scope of work and how residents are made aware of what is going to be happening. Because this is something that in our work, we hear a lot of concern about, right? You know, the, our development partners in NITIA, we, we share a lot of information. We gain valuable feedback throughout the pre-development process and put together the scope of work. But residents still want to feel assured that at the end of the day, when the construction work is actually being done and the rehabilitation is complete, it matches what was said in pre-development, in those meetings, right? So one of the things that our team has been working on lately in the later iterations of the project is putting together a robust community plan that gets distributed to every resident across a project. And within that plan, we detail all of the, the scope items that residents should come to expect when the rehabilitation is complete. And part of the, the reason for...
Will the residents be a part of creating that, that plan?
Absolutely, yes. The residents are part of creating that plan through overriding meetings and engagement.
Will they, will they be part of that plan? Because currently...
Yes.
They're not.
Yes, they are and they will be.
Okay. All right. So we are now, darling, did you, Councilmember Millie, did you have any more questions?
Just one. You said Saratino is doing well. I was wondering why, because it used to be in my district, now it's not. But I remember when it was in my district, no, well, some people were still in there. And to this day, people are still in there and it's not finished. So I, I just need a little clarity.
Ferentino was always one of our more challenging properties, as you know, especially when it came to plumbing and mold issues and, and also the roof. We had to, as you know, we had to relocate residents who lived on the upper floors.
And some residents chose to stay.
Correct, yes. And so...
Is that holding the whole project?
And, and again, I'll give it to Jonathan and Michael, but conditions of Ferentino was so bad, and thank goodness though, for this program, that we were able to find the funding to reinvest in Ferentino to where it was...
How many years has it been so far?
Well, it's been bad for a very, very long time, but it's...
Excuse me? No, how many years?
Oh, the conversion. Oh, pretty fairly...
Has it been over four years?
No, it has, no, the renovation has not been, yes, it has not been four years. It's been about three at this point, almost three.
So with RAD and PAC developments, how long will it, the scope of remodeling these buildings, the longevity of it? Will it be no more than six years, eight or 10?
For the renovation to happen?
Yes. Especially if some people chose not to move and maybe they wanted checket board that maybe you move all the tenants to one side and remodel, and then when that side is done, because some people don't trust. They feel if you move them out, they're not getting back in their apartments. And I understand that. But have y'all ever thought about, that's the reason why it's not finalized already?
Can I, maybe just something about Ferentino Plaza, which is, a lot of us have been there and including since the, it closed in December 2021.
It's closing?
It closed in December 2021, so it's...
21?
December 2021. That property had severe issues...
We know.
With the roof and the parapet. And so there was a massive amount of water intrusion that came into the property. They had mold throughout the wood joists. Yeah, it was a physically very damaged building when we converted it. They have vacated the buildings in order to do the construction, and it's a really important project. There are people that, like Brian said, they were living there without a subsidy for a very long time, was unsubsidized, and the property was in terrible condition because of all the water.
You know what you just said. You said it was subsidized and now it's unsubsidized.
No, I said in the past, it was not subsidized, there was no proper subsidy.
Subsidy now.
There's no proper subsidy for it, and now it does have a path forward. So I just want to, it's actually a success story for the program. This was a building, like I said, that had tons of water intrusion.
Could we talk furthermore about that offline? Because...
I think we could, in fact, in Councilmember, if you, if you would like, we can, we can even set up a tour with, with Councilmember Banks and you can see the property now. Because I think you'd be very surprised at the progress they've made there. And as somebody who knows the history like you do and remember the, the days when the, the property was in distress, to see the way it's turned around now, we'd be proud to show it to you.
So some people are still living there with you remodeling it?
No, the building had to, we could not do...
Because of the, yeah, because of the condition of the building.
The conditions are so bad that we could not do in-place rehab.
Okay, so it's totally vacant.
And just to clarify, because this was something you asked earlier too, we do a lot of environmental testing before we decide if we're going to do an in-place rehab or not. So every developer at this point has to test every unit at 0.5, which is the new standard for lead-based paint. If you're abating lead-based paint as part of the rehab, you have to relocate the person out of the unit. You can't keep the person in the unit. So there's no risk of lead dust hazards, and we have to clear the unit before the person can go back in with dust wipes. And the same thing applies in the Ferentino example where we had pervasive mold behind the sheet rock and around the wood joists. We didn't feel comfortable letting people stay in place during the rehab.
Thank you.
So it was vacated and we worked with the developer to do that. So we take that very seriously.
Yes, and I'm putting legislation, any meeting go after one, we should be provided lunch.
If I could co-sponsor that bill, I would be glad.
Thank you. I bet you will, Brian. Now we're going to move forward, guys. Thank you so much. And again, to NITIA, thank you for the opportunity to, you know, to, to hear some of the responses that we heard. But I think overriding is important. Tenant engagement is key. And that's what's been lacking with these RAD, with these conversions. There's been no real tenant engagement, and it seems more like an occupying force coming in and taking over the community. And that's what we've been seeing in my particular district. And like we've constantly said to a lot of developers, have the conversation and, and listen to the tenants. Just don't take it as an advisory, but listen to the tenants and hear what they have to say and then implement it. They're the folks that live there, they live there every day, they have to deal with the decisions that are being made by some of these RAD PAC developers who have shown complete disregard for a lot of the tenants and particularly some of the tenant association. And I get text messages all the time about just basic things. Just got a text message yesterday from the Tenant Association of Linden Houses where the maintenance folks that are keeping the grounds, mopping the buildings, basically told them on the side, pulled them to the side after a construction meeting and told them that there's no budget for mops or supplies to mop the buildings. And this is basic, basic maintenance, basic maintenance. And we're talking about the, the, the groundkeepers, the mate, folks that are supposed to maintain the buildings are telling the tenant association, there's no budget to mop the floors, to purchase mops, to purchase supplies. That's, that's, it's definitely disheartening to hear that. And once again, we have to get a rap on where the money's going. We, you know, listen, this get-rich scheme has to stop. So again, thank you, and hopefully we'll get responses back to some of the questions you were unable to answer today. Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you. Okay. Now I'm going to open up the hearing on public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording, photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion into the hearing record. If you wished to speak, well, we already did that already, most of these folks have already signed up already. Again, guys, let's obey the decorum. And now we're going to move forward with bringing up our folks who gave a testimony today. And we're going to start with, the first name is, Alexa Cruz? Alexa Cruz and...
Alexa Cruz, please.
Thank you. We have a CG? Yeah, it's two initials, C dot G? Vasquez? Zule Vasquez? Zule Vasquez? Luis Velez? Luis Velez? Okay, no, not a problem. I didn't see her, sorry about that. We're going to start from my left. So that would be Ms.
Alexa Cruz.
Ms. Cruz. Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm a NICA resident for many years, since 1969. And I've been under Section Nine. And I'm very happy with, I was very happy with NICA before. But excuse the language, but now they're full of it, NICA people. Because they're selling us and they're trying to give us Rad PAC, whether it's Rad PAC, Preservation Trust, or whatever they may call it. It's still essence-related and it's privatized. And it will hurt every person that has low income. And we don't need that. We need security, we need to be subsidized, and we need to have Section Nine stay as is. And, you know, I don't trust NICA because of what came to the light about the 70 employees. And I'm pretty sure they're pretty, pretty, pretty good count of people that are dishonest in NICA. I'm not saying all, but I'm not happy with them. I see that they make a six-figure salary on our account, on low income. There were billions of dollars distributed for years and years and years and years. And look where we stand now. Where we don't have, we have a bestow, we have plumbing, whatever. My building is pretty good, but we're complaining about this because they were pocketing the money. This is a money grab and Essence Related is a landscape grab. Because they want to take everything. They want to, they want to, they want to make money on us. And we don't, we're the victims here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Cruz.
Thank you. I'm Selines Miranda. I am a lifelong resident of Elliott Houses. As many of you know, my public housing development, along with Fulton Houses, may be demolished. And if the council does not act fast to support the majority of the residents, 84%, who are firmly against demolition of our homes. Fulton and Elliott Chelsea residents were forced into a Rad conversion based on a working group where only six tenants from my campus, the Elliott Chelsea Development, participated. This is how Related Essence got their foot in the door. Renovations were initially offered, but out of nowhere, they sprung up a demolition proposal on us. So now, in addition to being forced into a Rad conversion, NICA and related companies want to force us into a demolition. If NICA's Section 18 application gets approved, resident rights and protections are not guaranteed. Related has a history of not following through on their promises. Some tenants are believing their word, but there is not a contract that guarantees a secure transfer. The survey that Related developers circulated was a biased survey. For starters, it was designed and administered by the developers themselves. Also, the word demolition does not appear on the survey. Instead, the term new construction was used to misinform residents by not describing that the option requires decades of demolition, 16 to 20 years or more, living in a construction site. Another flaw in the survey, we were not given the option to stay in public housing, which explains why 73% did not participate in this survey. Seventy.
Thirty seconds to wrap.
Seventy-three percent of the FEC tenants chose to stay in public housing when they, when they did not participate in this PAC survey. The tenants consciously chose not to participate in the survey with the purpose of keeping private developers away. This survey is not a fair representation of what the residents actually want. Unfortunately, several public officials, including our own council member, are choosing to support this proposed demolition by Essence Related and NICA. I am urging all council members to reject this flawed and biased survey and to stand with the majority of FEC tenants who are against the demolition of our homes. We made a decision, no privatization, no demolition.
Thank you for your testimony. Next.
Hello. Hi, my name is Anne Valdez. I am a resident of Gravesend Houses in Coney Island, first development built in 1954. I'm a third generation. I've also lived in Park Rock Consolidated. I lived at 1598 Sterling Place between Buffalo and Rochester. And when I lived there, I was, I had been transferred originally from Richmond Terrace Houses in Staten Island. I moved there on an emergency transfer for domestic violence. And when I moved into Park Rock, about a year into it, or almost a year into it, my ceiling in my bathroom fell, almost fell, literally fell in my arms. Had my four-year-old son been in the bathroom, in the bathtub, I don't know what would have happened. But we're not here for that. All right, my point is, I'm just telling you, I've been around. Like I said, I live in Gravesend Houses. As it is, we have a lot of things being thrown at us that we don't want in Coney Island. And we're busy fighting. So when we're fighting one, there's somebody coming up behind our back forcing us into something else. Now there's two developments in Graves, in Coney Island that are being considered for the PAC. I don't believe that these tenant association presidents fully know the scope of what's going on. And I wish that I could have been called before the NICA folks left because I don't have a problem speaking out. Recently, Brian Honan came to Gravesend Houses for like a second time, telling us the story of what they plan to do, how beautiful it's going to be. But I don't know if anybody else noticed that when NICA speaks, they constantly change words and names of programs.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, this was originally rolled up, rolled out during COVID, at the beginning of COVID, and it was called The Blueprint. Now it's called, now it's called Preservation Trust. Rad started nationwide and now in New York, it's called PAC. Either way, they keep changing names, terms, who qualifies, who's behind it, who's going to do the work, what's going to be the same. They're literally trying to tell folks most of the time that as NICA, Section Nine, oh, when they turn into a Section Eight program, everything's going to be the same. That is not true. That is a total lie. I appreciate the city council speaking up on it. And I know that we don't have very much time, but I have no problem speaking to each and every one of you individually, together or whatever. All right, and you're welcome to come to Coney Island to see exactly what's going on in Gravesend Houses and everywhere else. And I'll walk with you no matter what development. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your voice.
Good afternoon, Mr. Banks. My name is Crystal Glover and I'm from a development in Manhattan. I'm afraid to even say which one because the fact that I speak up is scary. Maybe I'll tell you in private which one it is. First of all, city council, NICA, these people, everybody stays in their lane. I remember coming here testifying a while ago, and I forget the brother with the cowboy hat. He was falling asleep. He was on the committee, this committee. They don't do their homework to even know what's going on in these developments. So they're just here. So if you're in a lane and you don't even know what's happening, you got a problem. These NICA people, for instance, Curtis Williams, he was with Resident Engagement. I could tell you all the names of them because I used to be a president of a tenant association. And under my leadership, infill was canceled because we found out about TPA money, how to spend it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Most of the questions asked today, I could probably answer because to me, like the sister said, these people, Resident Engagement, today they got somebody new. Like when I was in there, you had Curtis Williams. And then you had DeHaisuits and all this kind of people. Then 20 minutes later, they changed and get some, Curtis, went from a Curtis, went from a Leroy Williams to a Curtis Williams. Now you got this other chick. And every minute, they changing shifts so they can never get to know who TAs are. Tenant associations are operated by bylaws. Residents, district councilor presidents and all them folk, they only deal with leadership, the boards. They don't come out and speak to all residents. Come on, let's gather, sit in the front, in the backyard or whatever, to have a conversation. So they don't really get to hear what we're talking about. This, I can go on and on and on. This thing here today, public housing, Rad PAC and what have you, hasn't hit my development yet. But I'm here today.
Thirty seconds to wrap.
I'm here today to say a prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our debt as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever. Amen. I want to dedicate that prayer to two women in my development. Both jumped off the roof to their deaths. One was funeralized yesterday. And I also want to say one more prayer. The 23rd Psalm. I'm sorry. How does it start out? The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures. He leadeth me beside still water. He restores my soul. He leads us in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. And yea, though we walk through the valleys of the shadows of death, we will fear no evil, for thou art with us. Thy rod and thy staff comfort us. Thou prepareth a table before us in the table, in the presence of our enemy. Thou anointest our heads with oil our cups runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life. And I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Amen.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're going to keep, we're going to keep the testimonies to two minutes. All right, guys, I'm going to be respectful of everybody and get everybody a chance to be able to, you know, hear their voice. So please, two minutes, two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Zulay Velazquez and I'm from Jacob Rees Houses. Born and raised in the Lower East Side. I just want to say, as in general, like the Lower East Side has suffered so many tragedies, right? 9/11, multiple resilience projects. So now we're like on a second resilience project. Our infrastructure is damaged, not damaged because of them, but I'm sure that the banging and the, and the digging hasn't helped our infrastructure, right? But I want to say that the Lower East Side as a whole may be affected this way, which is, it sets us a little bit apart. Jacob Rees is in its, an animal in itself because we basically were built on top of an old manufacturer gas plant. And the residents, we didn't even know that. When we got our leases, right? We just got into the properties and we didn't even know that. Then came the asbestos notification about, maybe like about a year and a half ago, two years. But prior to that, Con Ed already knew that Jacob Rees needed to be cleansed up, but it wasn't because at the request of the resilience project. So we've been further, like, put into danger, our healths, because of this resilience project. Not just because of the Sandy resilience project, but because of also the East Coastal resilience project. So as they dig, the toxins get into our water system, our air, you know, and it's a hazard. Not only is that a hazard, but people have actually died. And I think my mother has actually died because of it as well. Had multiple medical problems and we couldn't even figure out some of the reasons why, but they treated her. But she's dead now. I have marks on my body that may be cancerous that I haven't even checked out. And it's a shame because the people who are actually voting for this project are the people going to be most affected by it. Because you know what? Those people are the people who worked, working-class people who have their social security and their pension. They don't qualify for Section Eight. They're not going to qualify for Section Eight. And they're going to be the first ones to get kicked out because they want change, they want a new building. But guess what? They're not going to be here when this conversion takes place. And the only thing that sets us aside that makes us unique, and I am so sorry, Mr. Banks, is the fact that Jacob Rees is going to be given the option to vote. But our vote is going to be in November and not enough tenants know. So I've been trying to get the tenants aware of this. But is that what sets us different, what's aside, is that you're basically killing us? Little by little, slowly? Like, it's sad. You can look online and see all the way from 20, but I'm sure there's more proof where there's, there's proof that they need to fix the site and they haven't. Con Ed also, this asbestos came on the news. They retracted their statement. But you, we have a list of over 40 tenants, over 40 tenants that suddenly not only tested for arsenic, okay? But they actually have like rapid cases of cancer. We have a two-year-old that just died in back of my building because she was so frail now. Her parents haven't even connected the dots. This is serious for us, but the fact that people don't even know that this is taking place, the project in itself.
Thank you for your voice, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Luis Velez and I also live in Jacob Rees. I've been there for 41 years and where I live now, I've been there for 11 years. It's sad that when I moved from 1115 into 1017, they never said to me, housing never tells you that the apartment has an issue. I have a room that is disgusting. It rains, I mean, through the ceiling, through the walls, because the bricks are not to part anymore since those buildings were made in the 40s. My concern is that my granddaughter, she's 11 years old, they had to take her recently to the emergency for oxygen. Low blood pressure and heartbeat because of the fact that there's a sting, a smell in that room, horrifying. They've known this since the day I moved in when it started raining and they haven't done nothing. I put numerous tickets, they haven't done it. I myself have health problems about, since I've been into that apartment also. But my concern is that all this that's going on with PAC and Rad and Section Eight, knowing that certain incomes are high and that we're not going to be able to afford to live in the Section Eight apartments because of our income. So that concerns me. The second thing is that I'm very affected by the TAs because for nine months, they were with a consultant without telling us anything. We didn't know anything that was going on for the last nine months. I think in the last two or three months is when we finally found out what's going on in New York City Housing Authority projects. They never said to us that, all of a sudden, they said they were training. But there's developers, the consultant promises us that it's going to be permitted to see in Section Eight. Don't worry about it, everything's going to be fine. All lies. So at this point, they're saying that our vote, we need X amount of vote. That's what is it, 20% or 15% I think it is? For vote. That's unfair. We have the right to vote. We're the tenants. We live there. I pay my rent. They don't pay my rent. I pay high rent. I pay over a thousand-dollar rent. It's unfair that they should have the right to vote and the right to decide for us. That is unfair. We have the right. We are the tenants. They should consult us. They should tell us. They should bring us, every time we go to a meeting, a consulting, a developer, someone's there to pressure us into taking this, this, this plan that they have. I, I believe that we should have Section Nine kept, keep it the way it is and have it fixed. Housing had billions and billions of dollars for years. When John Red. When John Rhea was there and Margarita Lopez, where's all that money went to? Billions of dollars. They never said anything about it. That was for us, for them to fix our apartments. They didn't even touch our apartments. Nothing has been done to our apartments in all these years. Where's all this money? And now they want to put Section 8 because they need the money? That's unfair for the tenants. That's unfair for the people that are there, the seniors. Another thing is that if I wanted to go into a senior housing, my daughter has to leave the apartment in order for me to move into a senior apartment, where she's a single mother with two kids. You kidding? That's unfair. The rules and regulations of housing, the three panel people that were here, they're all liars. All lies, all lies. That the tenants are engaging in all this process, lies, lies. Thank you so much for your time and for having me here.
Thank you for your testimony. Councilman Merely wants to ask a question.
I just want to know, you said your, and my condolences, your family, you said the infrastructure was of your Jacob. How, how do you think the NYCHA come around and test after the earthquake?
Honestly, I don't know, because I don't know if the TA would even address that in the next TA meeting, but the TA hasn't put out a notice and said, you know, "Has anybody or anything happened to your apartments that I've seen?" Nor has NYCHA. And the only reason why I know, not just because it's common sense, but because one of the council persons, right, actually told us the infrastructure because of, like, what's happened with the constructions, like it's weakened our infrastructure. And he knows this.
And that's why I was just asking if it's already so, and with this earthquake we just had, I think it needs to be addressed, to make sure that you're safe. That's what I'm saying.
I think that, you know, it's gonna all boil down to the fact that we don't, instead of having, like, basically, Section 9 residents, NYCHA could've told Section 9 residents, "Hey, listen, we need to press our local, state, and federal agencies for more money to fund public housing, and please help us do this." Instead of asking us for help to help them get the money that they needed to repair our apartments, they didn't reach out to us and ask us to do that. And some people are not politically conscious. And don't, and some of these people, because of all these programs have been defunded for so many years, don't even know that they have the power to make these changes on their own, and don't have a voice. But then PAC and RAD comes with the, "We have social service programs," but we would've had, we already had social service programs, but they were defunded, and this is, almost seems like it was a process, a strategic one, to put us in a position where we're so desperate, and our teenagers are getting into trouble, when we can just guide them and offer them, kept the services that we had. It's just too much.
I just want to ask one more. You said, if you wanted to move into senior housing, your family members are not grandfathered in?
No.
You should address that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I say, the first panel that testified, before NYCHA testified, they spoke for about an hour. So can I give one more second? And can she get one more second as well?
I'll give-
They spoke for almost an hour.
Let me say this, if I give you 30 seconds, you're gonna keep to the 30 seconds?
Absolutely.
Excellent. 30 seconds, 30 seconds.
NYCHA, these tenant associations are supposed to be the voice. When I was president, they would drop, I would go to management, they'd drop everything they was doing. Yes, Ms. Glover, that's where the power's at. What we need to be doing, I don't know how many developments in total in New York City Housing Authority, 500 and something, we need to get a major lawsuit.
That's right.
That's what we're gonna have to get. We're gonna have to kick their butts and get a major, we gotta come together, every NYCHA development has to come together and get a major lawsuit going on. They tried to rock Shola Elatoya and dog her out, but she was just whatever. We, as tenants, we're gonna have to get this lawsuit together, and what it will do, it'll give us everything we need. That's what we're gonna have to do. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Thank you. 30 seconds.
The reason why I wanted to speak again, I forgot to mention that I am also a member of Community Voices Heard for over 20 years. So all through these processes, I have been a part of it. We fought to make sure, to try to keep Section 8 out of public housing, because we knew that when they put them together, they were gonna water down Section 9 even more than they already have. Not everyone knows that originally, New York City Housing Authority was under three entities, separately paid. Only a few are fully federal. Now they're all federal, because of my organization as well as a couple of others. Alright, so my point is, and I'm also a resident, off of Superstorm Sandy as well. So the two developments that they're trying to convert now should have been Sandy recovery, so why would they need to be part of RAD PAC?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your advocacy. Thank you, everybody on the panel. Now we're gonna go to the next panel, to be respectful of time.
Can I add? Go fast, go fast. I promise.
Just wait for them.
It's about, yeah. No?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just 30 seconds.
Okay, alright.
And just wait for them to get up and then we'll-
Okay. So I just want to say that when RAD, when they were up here talking to the panel before us, they said they needed to get back to us about what they would do if there was no tenant association, either functioning or none available. However, they have, RAD PAC has something called Principles.
Principles, correct.
And in those principles, it says that if there is no tenant association, that they would, that it would be the management's office discretion to make the decisions. This is what their principles say. So that's just for the record, what I've seen, you know? And it signs, and it was a series of organizations that were a part of this principle planning. And there was one more thing.
Thank you for your advocacy again. Alright. We're gonna call up the next panel. We have Mr. Newman. And Alex McDougall. Ms. Belton? Thank you. Wait a minute, okay. Thank you. We're gonna begin to my right, Ms. Belton.
Okay, I wasn't ready to be the first one, but here you go. Being old school, okay? Yes. I am from the forgotten borough of, well, it's called Staten Island, but I call it Satan Island, okay? And unfortunately, people on Staten Island are most definitely forgotten, okay? And don't know a lot. But I'll just give you what I have. The grounds are kept immaculate in Mariners Harbor Housing Development, but they let the apartments dilapitate to the point where it's horrendous. There are mice in there, right, that you end up renting from, being kicked to the curb, even to the point where I've even gotten bitten. And they purposely, and I could prove it, they purposely let that happen, because one person will have a problem with mice, and I have told them many times to do the basements, and they didn't do it. And then they did it, and then all of a sudden, it would come to a point where there'd be at least, and I'm not exaggerating, I'm literally saying that I could catch at least three mice a day, okay? So they finally did that, and they allowed people to do things in the development that they shouldn't be able to do, like above me. They allowed people to run water to the point where my cabinets came off of my bathroom wall, and even my cabinets came off my kitchen wall. And they knew about it, and they didn't remove the cabinets for about a week, and it's been five years since this happened, and I still don't have kitchen cabinets.
Wow.
Okay? They, what you call it, the new management came in, and I was in there one day, putting in a complaint against the worker, and the maintenance was, like, he would come in and knock on the door lightly, and then put something on there saying that he was there, and he didn't, he didn't. So I caught him going out one day, and I called him back. I says, "Listen, when you knock, you need to knock hard enough for me to hear." And also say who you are. And he says, "No, I don't have to do it like that." And so we came in there, I showed him different things, what was happening. He says, "Well, you know, you should really move," instead of putting up with, I'm like, "Oh, really?" So I went to management to explain to them about him, and I was speaking to the receptionist, beautiful child, pray for her everyday work in there, okay? So I was paying attention to her, and the assistant management came in and was talking to me, and I didn't pay attention to her, because I was still talking to the sister, right? Then this guy, I don't know who he was, came out and started talking to me. I'm like, "Listen, I'm still talking, putting in my complaint. Will you please wait, just like we tell our children? You know, when two people are talking, you wait, and you say, 'Excuse me.'" And he says, "Well, I'm the new manager, and if you can't hear what I have to say, then you can't put your complaint in." And he says, "No, and we're not gonna hear you." That's it, right? A few, a few couples down, a few weeks later, I get a call from him, I go in, he says, "I'm not paying my rent." And, "No." He says, "Your rent is habitually late." I says, "No, it's not habitually late. It's not being paid at all, because I'm on a rent strike."
Excuse me, excuse me, mother. We gotta, we gotta go into the next testimony. I want to thank you.
Oh, okay. Oh, I know. Okay.
Appreciate you. Thank you for your testimony, mother.
Yes.
Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Lucy Newman, and I'm an attorney at the Legal Aid Society. To my left is my colleague, Alex McDougall. She'll introduce herself in a minute. I just wanted to thank the committee chair and the members of the committee for having this important hearing and for your continued commitment to public housing. I just wanted to give you a little brief kind of overview of Legal Aid's work over the many years to help NYCHA's residents. We really have, for decades, been at the forefront of representing NYCHA's residents. Many of the rights and protections that NYCHA residents have result from lawsuits that Legal Aid brought against the authority. And in that vein, when the Bloomberg administration filed for approval for a RAD application at Ocean Bay Bayside, we demanded a seat at the table to ensure that we could be there to protect residents through that process. We subsequently were part of the RAD Roundtable that developed the guiding principles that govern NYCHA's RAD and now PACT program. And the Legal Aid Society, together with the Community Service Society, drafted and published a RAD handbook that is given out to many residents facing PACT conversions, and it's online and widely distributed. In addition to that, we have, most recently, set up a helpline that was mentioned earlier. The number is 212-298-3450 for any resident who is undergoing or has undergone a PACT conversion. On that helpline, we can give people advice, we answer their questions they may have around PACT, and we also advocate for them with either the administrative, with either the agency or the new property management. I'm here because I want to talk about three of the most common issues that we see in pre-conversion of PACT properties. I would say the first one that we see and hear of a lot is the lack of repairs that are made in the run-up to a conversion. Routinely, we hear, not just from our clients, but from their own mouths, from property management, "You'll have to wait until the conversion for repairs to be made." Until the point of conversion-
30 seconds.
Until the point of conversion, NYCHA remains the landlord, and as such, is obligated under law to make those repairs, and tenants are entitled to have those repairs made. So I really want the council to continue oversight over the issue of repairs, and I urge the agency itself to ensure that they have adequate funding to cover the costs of repairs up until the point of conversion. The other thing we see and we're concerned about is the number of vacancies that are held pending the temporary relocation that they expect to have after conversion. Holding those vacant for a long time means that people are not coming off of NYCHA's waiting list, and we know that every person who sits on that waitlist is in need of housing. And we also know that that means that people who are seeking transfers within NYCHA or within those developments are not able to get into those units. Thirdly, goes to the other thing around morale in the buildup to conversions. I think it's fair to say that the property management staff become very checked out, because they know that they're gonna be moved to another development after conversion. This means that we see routine things that they're required to do, like interim recertifications, helping people add household members, it's just not getting done. So I urge the agency to create a, basically, a specialized group of kind of roving managers who can come in prior to a conversion and start working with the property management to start taking care of, like, housekeeping matters, so that people do not suffer after conversion, because things that should've been done weren't done. Thank you. I'll pass it over to Alex, who's gonna talk about post-conversion.
Thank you for your testimony.
I just, before I start, I just want to address something that Mr. Gueva said. He said that, you know, through PACT, there is no displacement, and his basis for making that statement was that, that under the RAD statute, there's a right to return. But, you know, history has just not borne that out. We know that demolition does lead to displacement, so I would just strongly caution against taking that statement at face value. And for the sake of brevity, I just would like to share some additional issues that folks are dealing with, that tenants are dealing with post-conversion. You know, we've mentioned repairs pre-conversion, post-conversion, repairs are a huge issue. You know, NYCHA has, at least NYCHA has a, albeit flawed system, but a system for making requests for repairs. A lot of tenants tell us that, you know, post-conversion, there's just not, not really a clear way or an effective way to make requests for repairs and to track those requests, which is a huge problem, especially prior to any work being done at the development. People, some people feel like they're in a greater state of limbo than they were before. And sometimes the team doesn't really know what to tell people about how to get repairs done, especially after hours, like, in the evenings and on the weekends, when there are serious issues, like boilers going out. And then quickly, I will just say, I think prioritizing things here, that on the issue of transfers, at the time of the conversion from Section 9 to Section 8, transfers, the transfer extinguishes. So people have to, if they need a transfer, have to make a new transfer request. You know, NYCHA tells us that these transfers, you know, there's no transfer back between 8, Section 8 and Section 9, but also that people cannot transfer within the Section 8 portfolio, and there's simply no reason for that. There's no reason why the only, you know, the alternative to transferring within a development is getting a portable voucher. So we really think that is a priority issue, based on what we're hearing from tenants.
Excuse me one minute. We want to remind the public, the public shall remain silent.
Oh, no, I think that's fine. Yeah, we're tight for time, so I get it.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is August Lineback. I'm a staff attorney, along with my colleagues, Cecilia MacArthur, in the Manhattan Housing Unit of Legal Services NYC. Our organization represents thousands of low-income tenants across the city. Today, we'd like to focus our testimony on two specific issues with the RAD PAC program we've identified from recent casework and organizing. First, the program's failure to live up to its promise of affording better living conditions for tenants. And second, the failure to protect tenants' due process guarantees throughout the conversion. While the central promise of the RAD PAC program is to leverage Section 8 funding and private capital to fund repairs and rehabilitations, this promise often comes slowly, if at all, and tenants are forced to live with toxic conditions long after their buildings have converted. Our work with Mr. and Ms. D, an elderly man, his adult daughter, and her two young children illustrates this problem. Their building was converted in 2020, and since then, it's been managed by PACT Renaissance Collaborative. When we first met the family, they're in the process of moving back to their longtime home after a one-year temporary relocation. Despite this long absence, upon their return, they found the most hazardous conditions in their apartment had not been remediated. Over the following year, Ms. D's son landed the emergency room with asthma attacks on at least four occasions. His asthma was exacerbated by the exact conditions which the family has relocated, including infestations of mice and cockroaches, broken radiators that did not provide adequate or consistent heat, and a buildup of dust from construction, constructional work throughout the building. or consistent heat, and a buildup of dust from construction, construction work throughout the building. The D's story highlights how NYCHA's oversight, or lack thereof, has failed to provide the quality of housing those promised through RAD-PACT conversion. Yet, the D's story does not end with them staying in an apartment in disrepair. In both 2022 and 23, the apartment failed NYCHA's housing quality standard inspections. And earlier this year, the agency shut off their Section 8 subsidy and required the family to look for alternate housing in the private market with a portable Section 8 voucher. Now, the D's are under deadline to find alternate housing in the private rental market or lose their subsidy altogether. This is the mirror opposite of what RAD-PACT was supposed to offer. As direct result of this conversion, the D's were first displaced for a year under the promise they would come back to a safe and healthy living environment. Yet, not only did that not happen, but ultimately, PACT Renaissance and NYCHA's failures led this family to be required to abandon their home entirely. Two things went utterly wrong here. First...
Thirty seconds to wrap up, sir.
...failed its obligation to repair the D's apartment level condition. Second, NYCHA failed to oversee PACT Renaissance along the way. And instead of intervening, the agency's lack of conditions deteriorated to the point of requiring the family to move out.
Thank you for your testimony.
Uh, good morning. My name is Cecilia MacArthur. I, along with, uh, my colleague here, work at Legal Services New York City. I will speak to the other central promise of PACT, which is that tenants will maintain the same rights they had as public tenant, housing tenants. Our RAD-PACT casework has demonstrated in practice, rights are often not maintained after conversion, and tenants have few modes of recourse when violations occur. The experience of my client, Sonia Torres, is illustrative. I represent Ms. Torres in housing court. She's the mother of two adult children and six minor adopted children. She's a single mother. She lives in what was formerly NYCHA's Wise Towers, and she's lived there since 1972. In April 2020, her mother, who was the head of household, died, and so Ms. Torres began requesting that she succeed. Um, she directed these requests as night, at, to NYCHA. But NYCHA, contrary to its own rules, failed to commence the succession grievance process, the RFM process. Later that year, Wise Towers converted to RAD-PACT with PACT Renaissance Collaborative as the new landlord, and so Ms. Torres began directing her succession requests to PACT Renaissance, and they told her they would handle it. PACT Renaissance, in fact, is, is not in charge. NYCHA Section 8 evaluates these succession requests. So Ms. Torres's requests were never provided to NYCHA Section 8. Then, without notice or opportunity to be heard, Ms. Torres was removed from the household composition and stripped of the opportunity to succeed altogether. Now, Ms. Torres is facing eviction in housing court from her home of 50 years. For Ms. Torres, PACT conversion has meant losing access to procedures that were available to her as a public housing tenant. And she's not alone. In recent years, our office testified to city council about the many issues, the specific issues Ms. Torres is facing, in, in a widespread, in a variety of situations, including NYCHA repeatedly losing applications in the lead of the conversion, both NYCHA and private landlords providing incorrect or confusing information about succession grievance processes, and no communication whatsoever between NYCHA and NYCHA leased housing, both pre and post-conversion. Ms. Torres and tenants like her have a right to succeed, but PACT conversion has made a process that was once straightforward so fraught and confusing it becomes impossible to navigate, effectively denying these tenants their rights.
Thirty seconds to wrap.
Further, Ms. Torres's experience points to a critical gap in the RAD accountability structure. After conversion, private landlords commence eviction cases. So here, NYCHA is not a party to the case at all. But NYCHA's participation is necessary as they, along with PACT Renaissance, denied Ms. Torres's rights. And as NYCHA, Section 8 processes, uh, the succession requests, only they can remedy the situation. This structure completely insulates NYCHA from accountability and leaves Ms. Torres without clear process to vindicate her rights. So while we're now trying to bring NYCHA into the housing court case, this is a very difficult procedural mechanism that no tenant could accomplish alone. And in fact, we haven't had success with it yet. And so in our practice, we've seen these two central promises of repairs and maintenance of rights broken with a next and a recourse for long-term tenants. Um, we ask that you look into these violations, and we thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am, hurry.
Hi, uh, so my name is actually Watukee Iriinaru, and my colonial name is Ramona. Um, I am the founder of Safe Section 9. We're a national coalition that works to educate and empower tenants so that they can fight against the privatization of public housing. Um, I think this morning, we've heard a lot about what's wrong with the program, and that's been well documented by legal services here in New York and by Human Rights Watch, which issued a scathing report about the impact that PAC has on public housing tenants in New York City. So I actually wanna focus a little bit on some of the solutions that our members have created and that we hope the city council will join us in. Uh, first, we ask that you place an immediate moratorium on all project-based, uh, conversions or privatizations, and that this is put in place until a comprehensive, third-party impact study is conducted. We encourage you to look at the mechanism used by Human Rights Watch to ensure that it actually, uh, takes into consideration true impact on the tenant as HUD and NYCHA define success for project-based Section 8 by how much money is actually brought into a property to address outstanding repairs. So it does not take into consideration the impact that it has on tenants, which you've been hearing this morning. So according to them, the success of the program is also always gonna be based on the money coming in, not on the tenant experience. Then, we want to ask that you call on Congress to uphold the RAT sunset, which is scheduled to happen in September 30th, September 30th of this year. Um, that is something that is going to allow us to nationally stop investing money that should be going to Section 9 public housing in project-based Section 8. And there are multiple organizations calling on Biden, uh, to actually change the funding that he's allocating for project-based Section 8. And I have some other, uh, points.
Thirty seconds to wrap up.
Uh, so one of the things I wanna highlight is the mental health impact on tenants. So when this process begins, tenants feel cheated, they feel anxious, they, uh, experience depression, and feel like their homes are endangered. That is another layer of trauma that's added to already living in conditions that are inhumane. But what you'll note today is that the tenants here are telling you that in spite of the tenant repairs that we need, what we wanna keep is public housing. Uh, then I also wanna encourage you to read the analysis conducted by Community Service Society, which undermines NYCHA's accounting. According to NYCHA, they need $79 billion to bring our housing stock up to date. And our individual report, and that report that I know, uh, actually find out the number's closer to $39 billion. So they're lying to you about the financial need. And I'm sending this all to you guys in writing, too. So you'll have the notes and the resources. And then I wanna talk about the TA, uh, for two seconds. There is no clarity on the website as to when the tenant association is actually approached, what conversations they're having are not open to the tenants. The tenants are not told what the timeline is for the project. And they also don't understand what the special application is submitted to HUD. And those are all points that when we try to organize tenants or look for legal support, we need to actually understand in order to fight better as tenants. And then evictions, they are 2% under NYCHA, but 12% according to the latest article written by the city. And finally, that rent burden that keeps coming up, and you guys are asking questions about, is something that's actually created by fees that the new developer, developer and management company put into place. Some of these fees that they can put in, we saw in other cities, they include the repairs of pipes. And one of the RAD lease lines that's really important is that they will now determine what excessive use is. So if a family has a grimy door because they have a three-year-old that likes to color on the wall, they can consider that excessive use. They'll also include things like, uh, maintenance of the ground, so landscaping. They will start charging tenants for repairs that are really capital. So that's what you need to be looking at when looking at the rent increases.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, everybody, for your testimony. I wanna also remind everyone that you have up to 72 hours to submit written testimony to the council's website.
Yes.
All right? Yes, Ms. Millie, then we're gonna...
I just wanna know, um, would y'all mind meeting that we could start seeing about the succession rights for our tenants? I would love to meet with you. Something has to be done. That's almost life or death for people to lose their housing. And if we don't stop it now, it's only gonna get worse. So it's up to us to put something in place to help our constituents. And I hope my colleague be with me. And ma'am, I hope you got an escrow account that you're putting your money in to make... But I got it. But do it to make sure that when...
No problem.
They do repair your building, you have the money to pay them, that they cannot displace you. We do not need another person.
But they're not getting back.
Okay.
I wanted to mention, uh, there's actually a clause that NYCHA is not adhering to that would make the succession rights easier to keep. According to HUD in the Section 1.8 of the notice for RAD, a tenant that currently lives in Section 9 and is opposing privatization should be afforded a transfer to another Section 9 unit based on availability. And like we just heard, they're constantly holding empty apartments. So there's no reason why NYCHA is not able to provide the, um, neighbor that spoke earlier with a transfer to another Section 9 site. And I can put that in writing for you guys, too.
Please do submit.
Please, definitely to me.
And if I may just add, in terms of the succession, I absolutely agree in, um, or we have submitted written testimony, and my contact information, Cecilia MacArthur, is in the testimony, so I would welcome you to reach out.
Thank you for your testimony. Just to remind the, uh, public that this is a formal government proceeding, and the public should and shall, shall remain silent. Okay, now we're gonna move forth with the next panel. Um, we have Methane Sarsky. We have, uh, Ms. Torres, Alexa Torres. We have Keisha Crawford. Caesar Goodwill. Sorry about that. Godwell. Godwall. That you, sir? All right. And we have, uh, Manville Martinez. Is that Manuel? Manuel? And we have Renee Keith. Renee? All right, so we're gonna begin to my right?
Oh, okay, let me get my computer.
Well, we'll begin to my left. You can begin, sir. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. Uh, thank you, um, Chair Banks, for, for letting me speak today. Uh, my name is Methane Sarsky. I am a public housing specialist with 12 years of service in public housing. I specifically specialize in, uh, NYCHA policy, resident engagement, and program implementation. Uh, the testimony before you is not representative of the New York City Housing Authority, where I am presently employed, and all opinions shared are based on the wisdom influenced by my service to NYCHA residents. Uh, I wanted to, uh, number one, reach out in support of Intro 110 and provide three friendly amendments for consideration. Uh, the first part, to strengthen this piece of legislation, uh, I would actually recommend that this body seek an independent program evaluator. Uh, the mayoral administration and their controlled state corporation, not city agency, has a self-selection bias to present favorable reporting that could invalidate the purpose of this important legislation. Number two, Section 8 PAC should be measured in comparison to existing Section 8 programming under NYCHA to ensure that we are making apples-to-apples comparison. In doing this, uh, an impact study has implications to not only improve Section 8 PAC practices, but all NYCHA-run Section 8 programs. Number three, uh, I would actually recommend removing guidelines on the impact you are seeking to measure from Section 8 in relation to Section 9. By allowing the independent city partner to conduct the above, variables can be identified and measured annually to provide this body with factual recommendations to improve practices. In consideration of the above recommendations, I am not only in support of Intro 110, but would encourage expanding this piece of legislation to expand protections across all Section 8 programs in NYCHA to benefit the largest amount of constituents. If I could have 30 more seconds?
Yes, 30 more seconds.
Uh, the one thing that, that I will add, you, you asked a question earlier regarding the difference between, uh, nonprofits that are serving under Section 8 PAC and the way NYCHA does it. And the difference is NYCHA is a much more sophisticated program. Uh, NYCHA REES, or most people know them as the REES Program, Resident Economics, Empowerment and Sustainability, employs a, uh, service coordination model, um, under the Opportunity Zone Model, originally created by the Rockefeller Foundation, in which you have community boards that make up each zone. There are 15 zones throughout the city, in which zone coordinators are specifically partnering with nonprofit organizations within the community to better connect residents to services, either through events, or they're doing so through referrals. I understand most folks wanna talk about Section 3, uh, but having been a zone coordinator myself, I specifically like it when I am engaging NYCHA residents to share opportunities based on where their journey is. That could, surely that could be in construction, but there's much more than that. There's finance, there's tech, there's, uh, AmeriCorps programs for our youth, HSE completions. There's so much more of a sophistication that we can do, and, and that is not something you're gonna get from getting one nonprofit provider who may not employ an opportunity service model in the same way that NYCHA does. Um, but I, I just wanted to share that, and thank you so very much for having me.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. I've been here all morning. Um, so, um, my name is Ike Sartorres. For, first of all, I'm here today representing residents to preserve public housing, of which I am a board member. But I am also president of Alfred E. Smith Houses Resident Association. I sit on C-COP, and I'm Manhattan South, um, District Chair. But at the end of the day, the most important thing is that I am a resident before I hold any other title. I also sit on the Board of Goals. But today, I am here to talk about how residents to preserve public housing, systematically, we have opposed RAD and PAT because our feeling and our experience has been that there is no real resident engagement, to the point that residents, when they find out, they go. And what they're shown, I've, you know, I, what I've told the residents in Smith is, "We don't want new stoves, we don't want new, um, refrigerators. What we want is for them to knock the walls, change our pipes, so that our buildings are sound." And those are the things that need to be done. And so I, I was sitting here going, "Let me count the ways of everything that they said that it's not true," right? That it's not functioning. REES does not work for, for my development and for a lot of the developments. And now, you know, we don't have those connections when it comes to Section 3. But my co-chair is here, who is the chairman of the Section 3 and is a much better person, so I'm gonna let him address that. But the reality of it is that the residents who go into these programs, a lot of times, they know. And I just found out, and I'm, I'm a chair, that if you're a senior building, 'cause this is important, if you're a senior building...
Thirty seconds to wrap up, ma'am.
If you go into PAC or RAD, they stop being senior buildings. And then, and that is a real issue. Because one of the reasons that people go into these senior buildings is for safety. And they're, and they're going to do that because you know what happens, right? Senior buildings have a high turnover because people die, you know, when we get to a certain age. I'm 71, and I tell NYCHA all the time, "I got one foot in the cemetery. Don't play with me," right? But the reality of it is, the turnover, so that will allow them to bring in people outside. Now, you're talking about gentrification. And as somebody else said, "If you are a retired person like I am, we don't qualify for Section 8." So, and the bottom line is, the trust with the 964, there's one line. It does not include all the protections that the 964 under Section 9 applies to the residents who live in public housing. And I thank you for holding this hearing. That's important. I told you I would come.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your voice and your advocacy. Next, Ms. Crawford? Hold on, hold on one minute. Hold on one minute before you go, you're gonna... Is that right?
Thank you, thank you, sir. Yeah, that's okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Keisha Crawford. I am the duly-elected president for Stuyvesant Gardens One Development. As the duly-elected president, I told NICA that we don't, the residents do not want RAD. We don't want PAC, we don't, you know, PAC staff since October of 2023, PAC been coming in our development and just bullying us. They knocked on my neighbor's door, my seniors' door, you know, telling them if they don't open up their door, they're gonna break their doorknobs and take them to court. My seniors, I have videos, my seniors petrified, scary, depressed, and asked me, what can we do? So I said, we're gonna sue. I brought it to one of the staff, one of the PAC managers, who's CEO, whoever is in charge of PAC, and told them about the behavior of one of their staff member. And he spoke, he said he's gonna speak with her about it. I don't know what happened, but this keeps happening. I have a lot of seniors in my community, and since they've been around, my office's been violated. I had my office, my Tenant Association office for a year and a half, nothing ever happened. Someone violated, and only papers were stolen, no electronics. Honestly, I feel that the property managers need to be investigated as well. And getting back to my neighbors, they're very afraid. Just had a meeting, a Tenant Association meeting on the 9th of April, and PAC invited themselves, they was not invited. I asked them politely, three times, to leave. They did not leave.
30 seconds to wrap up.
Yes, I asked them to leave three times, they did not leave. Very disrespectful, and something need to be done, and we need your support.
Thank you for your testimony. You can begin, sir.
Cesar Gold. I've lived at Elliott Chelsea Houses for almost a couple of decades now. I moved from Brooklyn. I was living in tenant walk-ups in Brooklyn before, working my own life, got sick. Fortunately, I moved in here, and these buildings, these NICA buildings, are the best buildings in the city. They're bombproof, fireproof, they've got real kitchens, real bathrooms. Nobody else has them. Even a $2 million one-bedroom, your kitchen is in your living room. We have separate kitchens, we got separate-- In Brooklyn, before I moved to NICA, I had a one-by-one-foot closet. That was the average in these old buildings. Nobody, really. You know, I have a bathroom where I could put in a small machine. But anyway, I've been going to every meeting, I've been retired, and I used to be an insurance agent, so I know how to read contracts, talk to people, and do a lot of crazy stuff. But with, you know, joy, intention, you know what I mean? I mean, okay, anyway, I have, I discovered something recently, but I want to say that when I walked in and I saw that executive, that NICA executive sitting here that you were screening, I watched this in July and January meeting, and I watched him perjure himself. Obviously, you don't care, or else you don't have fact-checkers, because they should all be in jail. Okay. Okay, this project was promoted as tenant-directed. This is absolutely false. I used to be heavily involved in the Tenant Association at Elliott Chelsea, like 13, 15 years ago, until they threw me out when Darlene Waters was installed as our Tenant Association President by Gottfried's office, which is a violation of our Tenant Association bylaws. You cannot have outside interference. Gottfried's office manages personally and installed Darlene Waters. She speaks for him. And Gottfried's retired, but that guy that's on our Tenant Board CB4, Jeffrey LaFrance, he was in Gottfried's office. He personally--
30 seconds to wrap up.
He personally saw Gottfried, Darlene, and she speaks for him. And she hasn't been coming to any of our meetings, because I think Darlene thinks she's sold her soul. And anyway, at the last CB4 meeting, Jerry spilled the beans. Not Jerry, but Joe Rizzato. And it's right here, was what he said. Joe Rizzato, "I was called to a meeting that was related on the 88th floor in March 2023. I had never-- Okay, we've been talking for two years. I've been going to all the meetings, I got nothing else to do, I got no family, I'm retired, I got nothing else to do, so I've been going to all the meetings. I got pages, and I could write, I could write a crime-epi award-winning series." I was called to a meeting, Joe said this two days ago, "I was called to a meeting that was related on the 88th floor of Hudson Guild--
Okay, sir, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
--in March 2023. I had never seen any change or talk whatsoever about demolition up until that time." This was last year, when they first announced this program. All of a sudden, I had seen familiar elected officials in that office when he arrived at the 88th floor. Okay? And they had, and he said they had seen all this stuff. You can watch it, it's on YouTube. The tenant leaders were there. Okay, so now the tenant leaders, the president, Acevedo, and Dirty Waters came up there, and he said, and he said they had just come from a Zoom meeting with the mayor, okay?
Thank you, sir.
It was the mayor's idea. And he said, I thought that was bizarre.
Thank you for your testimony.
Just 20, 15 seconds. It was presented here as the options, and Congressman Nadler said, "Show them, show them, show them." This is Nadler who pushed this idea on these presidents. This is not their idea, and the presidents speak for us? They don't speak for us. They're speaking for Gottfried's friends or Democratic Party associates who appointed them.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Thank you.
This is real testimony.
Thank you for your testimony.
And there's a lot more.
Thank you for your testimony. And you can--
Really? This is deep state stuff.
Sir, hold on--
These are Ukrainian war people.
You have 72 hours, sir, sir. You have 72 hours to give written testimony, that you can go to the council website, and you can, we heard you, sir. You're being recorded. Thank you. Thank you. Next. Mr. Manuel? Thank you.
Oh, yeah, one more question. Time for one more 30 seconds.
Sir, you are out of order. You are out of order.
This is what, 84, this is, 84% of tenants chose to keep their homes. 84 wins.
Remove him.
84 bigger than 16? Is 84 bigger than 16? Who wins the game? 84 or 16? Who wins it? Who wins it? 84 or 16?
I gotta get my stuff. I'm out here.
Look, 84. 84% chose to keep their homes.
Hello?
Okay, let me just remind everyone, guys, it's a two-minute, two-minute, two-minute for testimonies. It's by discretion to give a 30 seconds, so please, just keep it within that timeframe. We want to be mindful of everybody's time. Thank you. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, sir. My name is Manny Martinez, Manuel Manny Martinez. I am the Resident Council President for South Jamaica Houses, as well as the Queens South District Chair. This is an alliance of 11 resident councils from Far Rockway to South Jamaica and Queens. I would like to state that RAD is an attack on the Black and Hispanic middle-class families in New York City, given the large population that we have of public housing residents in New York City. Section 9, the difference between Section 9 and Section 8 goes beyond just the voucher or the project base. It's also a 40% difference when you discuss household income growth stability, because you have the ability now to be moderate income, to go from extremely low to a moderate income class. This is where programs such as Section 3, Resident Management, as well as a special resident business procurement process, all of which is expected to be facilitated to the residents, so that they can facilitate that transition. When you move to Section 8, you're eliminating 40%, you're destabilizing 40% of that household income growth stability. Because now, even though when a Section 9 resident gets converted into a Project-Based Section 8, they have in perpetuity 30% of their household income, but that is based off a HUD waiver, not legislation. So at any time a HUD secretary can be appointed, that can remove that waiver and then removes that perpetuity of 30% of their household income. If that public housing resident loses that apartment, right, that once-public housing resident, and a new household comes in, that perpetuity does not exist anymore. And so now, they will only be qualified-- Could I have a--
Yes, 30 seconds.
They will only be able to qualify to the 80%. And then, after they qualify for the 80%, the gross rent will kick in, which is equivalent to the flat rent for Section 9, and after six months of that, the Section 8 unit comes off the rent roll, if they stay there. And so this would drastically change the characteristic of our community, given that Section 9 public households don't always stay in one place. Also, just the Section 3, so that you know, Section 3 does not apply to PAC-RAD, it applies to the conversion of PAC-RAD. So while the conversion process of going from Section 9 to Section 8, PAC-RAD, happens, as soon as that finalizes, Section 3 doesn't apply anymore to that expenditure of funds, even though the residents that are Section 8 qualify as a priority for Section 3 worker, right? But it does not apply in perpetuity to PAC-RAD development. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
So Councilmember Mealy, I want to thank you for some of the questions you asked, because it made me think of some things. So, one thing we say is, why were things bundled together? Fulton, Elliott Chelsea, not together. Within Elliott Chelsea, it's Elliott, Chelsea, Chelsea addition. The survey, as of now, continues not to be transparent. As was previously said, 969 of the 3,388 responded, that is 16%. 84 did not. Therefore, they are the majority. Related, Essence, PAC-RAD needs to leave the development immediately. We continue. It is very important, we have our seniors, our knowledge tree, they're being left alone. Upon petitioning, we found a resident who has dementia, and they have not repaired her wall. The attitude was, from HOU, housing opportunities unlimited. They are demolishing, therefore, they do not need to repair, do her repairs. The people who are keeping her accountable are the residents. So along with Darlene Waters, yes, I did call her and let her know what was going on, and this is what she said. "I heard this. I heard there are problems in the development and repairs are not being done. That's nice. Can we do something about it?" We keep saying Resident Associations. We have not had a meeting in six months. We had one, it was canceled, in the middle of the meeting. We keep saying we do not want one or two people to drive this process. The Resident Association leaders are the one or two people who are driving this process, not the thousands of other residents who are in this process. We can't keep saying MWBEs aren't lovely. Quite frankly, this one is furthering our destruction, our demolition. They are perpetuating urban renewal. We need to acknowledge that fact. It can't be just about people who look like us and are us. It has to be us. One thing I want to say, this is a real estate transaction. We are pawns, we are chess pieces. This isn't about the city of New York, it is about all people. The half a million that live in NICA houses--
30 seconds to wrap up.
--that has been said to be its foundation, the most stable housing there is. So what I'm saying is, no demolition, as always. RAD, PAC, go home. Essence Related, stop fronting. Related is not part of this process. They stand by the side, as Jamar Adams of Essence Related does the explaining. They say nothing. They are in violation of the Western rail yard, and they will be in violation of our civic rights and our human rights as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank everybody on the panel. Thank you so much. Tanisha Grant. Stella Jamison. Annette Tomlin. And Christopher Leon Johnson. She's coming back, Priscilla. Ms. Jamison?
I'll start. Hello. My name is Tanisha Grant, and I am the Executive Director of Parents Supporting Parents and Moms United for Black Lives, New York City, and we are community partners of Residents to Preserve Public Housing. First, I would like to thank Chair Banks for having these important hearings on public housing. We appreciate you. First and foremost, most residents I know want to keep their Section 9. There is a lot of misinformation and outright lies being told by the leaders of NICA, and I use that term loosely. These programs, the RAD, PAC, and Trust, are already leading to eviction and displacements of many longtime residents. Our NICA communities have either been bullied or lied to to force them into these conversions. The fact is, NICA has been mismanaged and unkept by the elected managers and not the residents. Why should residents give up their Section 9 for programs that offer less protections and dangers of not qualifying for the Section 8 apartments? The whole point of Section 9 is to make sure everyone has access to affordable rent. It should not matter if they are so-called low-income, or on SSI, or SSD, or working poor. Everyone deserves a high-quality, decent home. We hope to work with you, Chair, to support Residents to Preserve Public Housing, to make sure our public housing is protected. We have over 400 public housing residents. Our communities cannot afford to lose their Section 9, to lose the protections that Section 9 offer. We also want to talk about Section 3. I know a lot of amazing residents who fight for their developments every day. These residents don't get paid, these residents get their free labor, because they care about their communities and they care about the NICA developments that not only did they grow up in, but their mothers and their grandmothers. This is truly a community. I look forward to working with you, Chair Banks. You know that I'm always on the ground, and that I'm always gonna bring the voice of the community, and the community wants to keep their Section 9. If we lose our Section 9, that is privatizing housing, and it will displace Black and Brown people who deserve a quality home. My name is Tanisha Grant, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your testimony and your voice.
Hello, I want to piggyback off Ms. Tisha Grant. My name is Priscilla Jamison. I am a resident of public housing. I'm also a member of RPPH, the Residents to Preserve Public Housing. I wanted to speak today about something that wasn't talked about under people going, being converted under RAD and PAC. I wanted to state that resident leaders are being forced to sign a nondisclosure agreement form with the developer, management companies, and NICA without a lawyer representative. This is deliberately hiding the facts that are involved with these conversions. These methods are harmful to the residents, because vital material and facts are being hidden from the stakeholders in the public. How can resident leaders protect themselves if they don't understand the legal implications of the NDA that they are being forced to sign? NICA has to stop telling residents that the 964 regulations apply to Section 8. I also want to add that the units that are vacated takes away needed funding from the Housing Authority, that they states that they need this money, but yet there are so many vacant units throughout the portfolio of NICA. So mine was just really short, and then I also wanted to add-- And then I also wanted to add that the pre-conversion of RAD, residents aren't getting services under these pre-conversions that are going through with RAD. So once the conversions are talked about, the residents stop getting the services that they need in their unit until the people or the management takes over the development. And sometimes this can last up to two to three years or more.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Tomlin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Annette Tomlin, and I am glad to be here to vent. I am pissed off, okay? I am tired of the smoke screen. This has to stop. Ninety years of NITIA. We understand where it failed, why it failed, and now we're here again. Who is doing the assessment? We need critical thinkers that's going to make a difference and a change. The tenants are suffering. The plotted plan has to stop now, immediately. I agree with everyone that's here, that are residents, that actually want to hold not just NITIA, HUD responsible, but also the city council. Y'all are responsible for a lot of this stuff here. We are calling and asking for your accountability. Stick up to your responsibility. And also, the tenants have a responsibility and accountability as well. We are not lawyers. We don't understand all the language. But we're good in understanding where we're at now, okay? And this is because it's being forced upon us. This is wrong. What are we going to do? Where is everybody going to go? We already have an influx of, you know, asylum seekers coming, homelessness crisis. You have four hundred thousand some odd people that are in NITIA. Where are they going? So what are y'all going to do? Nothing? The same old thing? No? We have a plan. I know I do. A town hall meeting needs to be called right away, okay? And I don't know which sister just said so, okay? But it needs to stop. Okay, escrow? Yes. A demand, stop, hold. Suitcase lawsuit? Yes. We're going to hold you all responsible. The contractors, you know, they, the developers and everything else, they did some jobs half, excuse expression, but half, okay? And nobody did anything to go behind them to make sure that anything was done correctly. This is uncalled for, and it's ridiculous how we have to actually live. Y'all are responsible. So what are y'all going to do? Nothing. Except for sit here and just listen to us while we vent. Two minutes you give us, and it's been over thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years, okay, of complaints? Not anymore. Not anymore. Thank you for your time. I'm pissed.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Tomlin.
Right? Oh, hello. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I'm opposed to this plan. Let me tell you the truth, that this is all part of the city of yes. Majority of you members are for the city of yes. Like you, Mr. Banks, you're for the city of yes. Because you're with the developers, you took money from developers, you take money from, you was part of Labor Strong 2023, and they're for the city of yes. So you're not going to go against them. You got to run in 2025. They might get an opponent to run against you. So you're not going to go against the developers. They own Labor Strong. They own the carpenters. So you're for the city of yes. You're going to vote yes for it, sir. And the truth is, the people here have to organize. The people here need real new organizations to fight for them and organize themselves, not have this organization that's called the Residents to Preserve Public Housing fight on their behalf. Because what's going on is their leader, Marquise Jenkins, is Team Colleen Rivera, who is for the city of yes. How do you have a leader like Marquise Jenkins fighting for you guys while he's Team Colleen Rivera? He's not even Team Christopher Marte. At least Christopher Marte is against the city of yes. He's against these unscrupulous developers. He's against this bad upzoning like Soho, NoHo. So shout out Christopher Marte for being against this stuff. He's not Team Marte. He's Team Colleen Rivera. You guys got to look at the petitioning ballot access with Marquise Jenkins. If I was you, members of RPPH, you need to have a meeting to expel Marquise Jenkins as the chair and the de facto leader of RPPH because he is compromised. He is a fraud. He is conflicted. He's an open couple of interests. He is corrupted. So let me tell people right now, you people have to organize and fight against this stuff. This is all a big plan. This is a little part of the city of yes, and you guys will be displaced. Don't pay this chair any mind. He is for the displacement of you people in NITIA and RAD. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay. We're going to take a quick, yeah, I'm going to take a quick bathroom break and, um, after that. Then we're going to go to the Zoom testimony right after. Thank you. This meeting is called back to order. We're now going to proceed to our virtual testimony. And the first person on is Christina Chase.
Starting time.
Oh, hello. I'm sorry, I was not ready. Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone, who made themselves available to be there in person today. I am sorry I cannot be there with you. I'm Christina Chase. I'm second vice president of the Ravenswood Resident Association. I'm also a member of RPPH, the Section 9 Justice for All Coalition, and an advocacy coordinator at State Blue Justice, where we provide legal and policy support for different community-based organizations. And I have the honor and privilege of working alongside NITIA residents. But today, I'm here specifically speaking as a NITIA resident and the things that I shared, as well as some information that, you know, has accumulated by way of my employment. The first thing I really wanted to center was resident engagement. I am shocked to hear the way in which NITIA presented its, what seemingly amicable engagement. But to my understanding, it's always been coercive, intimidating, and undemocratic. And I just wanted to center that. What NITIA is doing is not necessarily anything amazing or new. It's actually a part of HUD's RAD notice that came out July 27, 2023, regarding resident engagement, and that they must, the PHA is encouraged to partner with the resident leaders. And they now have to provide all these additional documentations, substantiating resident engagement, the rubber stamps their application, and hold additional meetings. However, when we look at who actually shows up in the meetings consistently, it's not the population at large. It's a very small handful of folks. And as far as I'm concerned, even as a leader, I don't think those handful of folks can make decisions for the whole population of residents they.
Thank you for your testimony.
Represent. I just wanted to say one last thing, that in reality, that it's coercive. And what we're seeing with regards to FEC is that there are a large, quiggle mass of residents that are not in support, and they're not being listened to. And originally, RAD and PAC had nothing to do with infill. And so the infill plan to build new quote-unquote mixed-income housing on that very land that is Fulton, Elliott, Chelsea, was not anything tenants ever decided upon. And that's being pushed into the agenda. And that has nothing, it's a land grab. It has nothing to do with what the wants and needs of current residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person is Dana Eldon.
Starting time.
All right, all right, all right, my turn. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Banks. Greetings to all attendees today. As we all agree that there is more to be said regarding RAD, PAC, and the Trust, I am Dana Eldon, President of St. Mary's Park Houses Resident Council. It's 501(c)(3), as well as an Executive Board Member of Residents to Preserve Public Housing and a member of the D-COP Executive Board of the South Bronx. I live in a Section 9 project-based development. I'm here once again to speak before this council regarding my disdain of how NITIA has continuously misled and abused the rights of the residents of NITIA. Currently, we have seventy-three vacancies, according to the manager. And of those, I have not been provided the number of vacancies in Section 9 versus Section 8, which I'm supposed to be informed, according to NITIA publicly. But privately, they deterred management from providing me that information. Also, also, the budget for the development is a secret, and that information is not provided. Section 9 must be adequately funded, not only by HUD, but also by local city and state funding. Section 3 employment is said to be supported by NITIA. However, the construction companies only accept union members to work on Section 3 assignments. Qualified residents are not allowed to work on a project in their development until they become union members. Currently, I have one out of thirteen applicants that has an OSHA-40 and experience. But because he is not union, he's being offered a flagger position at best if they deem him worthy. No one looking like us or our residents is working on my capital project, a roof replacement in the South Bronx.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
No, 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 no. I've been here since ten o'clock. Let me finish my two pages.
We'll give you thirty more seconds, ma'am. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Others that have had at other sites would appear substantiate the Section 3 compliance. The council's questions are repeatedly, that we'll get back to you with that, or it is listed on our website. I'm here once again to stress that this council needs clarity. Residents in this process are not being told the whole truth. They are not informed of the transition of their rights, as well as the transition, Jesus, as well as the transition and responsibilities towards the developments. The process of voting is also an issue, as they are not fair with the percentage of voting. Fifty to sixty percent, in my position, in my opinion, this percentage is fair. It has been my opinion, and as I visit developers who have gone through the process, that the materials are cheap. The workmanship is just a cosmetic effect. The main problems are leaking roofs, pipes, old electrical lines are not being addressed. The appliances that are being installed are not completely new, and were most likely not sold by the manufacturer. Also, residents who have had the conversions have complained about the servicing of their developments and how the private manager companies are lacking in the work orders and in need of fixing different issues in their apartments. I live four blocks from Batanzas. I have been approached by a number of residents who voiced their disappointment with these conversions, as they still have leaks that come through the drywall and stained ceilings.
Okay, ma'am. Can we, we're going to conclude.
Sir, Chairman Banks, I've been here all day. Please let me finish.
I'm going to.
I've only got two paragraphs left.
Okay, I'm going to give you thirty seconds. Just speak a little quicker. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate it.
All right.
It looks nice outside, but truly lacking in the material quality. This misinformation and the promise of residents' rights are important to the human right to have a quality of life that will sustain them in a healthy environment. Section 9 protects our residents. Section 8 guarantees the legislature of 2022 that they will adopt the language of the 964 rules and regulations. But what guarantees that the residents will be awarded the same rights as they would with Section 9? Also, this practice of RAD, PAC must be abolished. The damage that has been done in many cases already is astounding. What is happening around the city agency, passing off their responsibilities to these private management teams, is critically affecting us. I ask the council to stand with the citizens of the city who reside in public housing. We deserve better than what is being done. We have the rights that we are being denied now. We are the residents of public housing, and we demand that justice be done and to halt the RAD, PAC program. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We're going to move on to Danada Chavis.
Starting time.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. You can begin your testimony.
I'm so sorry, I'm here a little bit, I'm out of time because it's not enough to address years and years of outrageous complaints. I do agree with the council member, Willis, earlier, who stated that we're going round and round in circles addressing these complaints. And in fact, I don't believe there can be any true resolve without confronting the facts. And the fact of the matter is, there is zero accountability for NITIA, who has totally abandoned its properties in favor of privatization and the unfolding of sixteen to eighteen properties on one private developer who has little to no experience in renovation is proof of that abandonment. It's an abandonment that's motivated by profit and profit alone. I think we're all clear on that. I think we're going round and round in circles trying to avoid the issue. I would like for the city council to hold these hearings and give the opportunity to tenant, tenant leaders to address NITIA as they sit up there at their table and tell lie after lie while you ask questions. It's clear to me that you're aware of the deception being given, but you could be far more effective if you let some of these tenants and TA leaders confront them when they tell these lies about what they're doing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Chavis. Dorin Goggins.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dorin Goggins. I'm a resident, and also, I'm the president for the FHA Homes Resident Council, which is an entity of FHA, We Possess Homes. This entity basically is for single-dwelling and multi-dwelling homes, which are scattered. We are a newly formed council as of December of 2023. The residents, I've heard everyone speak about NITIA and RAD PAC, which I agree that they should not be involved. And the thing that they're doing to the residents is no transparency. They tell a bunch of lies. When you ask them specific questions, they can't answer it because of the lies. So they started out. So they started out telling lies, so you know, when you tell one lie, you gotta continue to tell that lie. And that's what they have been doing for years now. My parents went into this home in nineteen sixty-eight. They're deceased now, but they always wanted to purchase a home. But a lot of things fell in the cracks. They used to come and do the repairs and keep the house maintenance. But that all stopped over ten fifteen years ago. No work has been done. But I've been paying, my parents faithfully paid their rent. And and we're in compliance. I'm in compliance, so I'm just here basically being a a voice for the residents because they need a voice. They need someone to know their 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 concerns. And um they wanna live in a healthy, safe environment. For a lot of years, people have been saying they're gonna do this, Nycha's gonna do this, Nycha's gonna do that, but they don't do anything.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you for having me here.
Thank you for your testimony. Iana Donna.
Starting time.
I'm the Director of Riverstone Senior Life Services, a community-based organization at ninety-nine Fort Washington. Um, we're coming from a different angle. We are a nonprofit agency in one of the Nycha RAD buildings. Uh, the new management seems to consider us more like a commercial tenant responsible for all repairs at our owner's expense. This was a real change since Nycha management managed the building. As renovations continued, there were major leaks causing significant damage to the two floors where we provide services. We were informed by management that repairs in any area which had already been renovated by Riverstone, thanks to capital and city uh funds, would be our responsibility. After five such events, our longstanding insurer dropped us, and I could not locate another insurance company that would even consider covering us for property insurance. And of course, we are required to have property insurance by DIFTA and just general practice. As a favor, the new management company added us to their policy. This meant a slight reduction in our premium, but a huge increase in our deductible from one thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars per incident. Now, as luck would have it, this past November, there was another major leak, which for the first time resulted from an accident that Riverstone caused. Where we were told that the cause did not matter, um the cause of the leak did not matter during the years two thousand nineteen and to two thousand twenty-three, but suddenly the cause did matter. And now it was our responsibility to cover these the loss. As you can imagine, the ongoing threat of of a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible plus puts us in a very precarious financial situation.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, we need your help, please help us.
Thank you for your testimony, it's duly recorded. Jeannie Lopez.
Starting time.
Yep, Boston Seacor. Nycha single-handedly decides which developments will get RAD. The selections are not based on repair needs. The latest physical needs assessments demonstrate that the repair backlogs do not impact the selection process. Instead, they seem to be focused on the sites that are desirable to their real estate partners. Then they work and hand over my precious ancestral land to one of the worst management companies in New York. The list of real estate partners allowed to manage and or develop is limited by New York State, Nycha, and the selection of partners is not truly democratic. Nycha approach to the tenants association is private, and their votes to that, oh, there we go. During the initial conversation, Nycha informed that the TA will undergo conversation on Project Base Section A. The TA is given at least three choices, and management development team does not have to report this to a larger community of tenants. Therefore, the selection process is undemocratic and also violates our rights. Boston Seacor, for instance, just had their president die a year ago, around the same year my mom died. And now we did not get a fair vote into how to get a new president in. And if not, whoever was a family member and or just on the team before got voted up. Crazy. Uh, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Judy Smith.
Starting time.
Hello, hello, everyone. Um, I'm keeping this in the frame of what you asked before, what do residents know? What can Nycha residents do? And the um oversight. What do um residents know? Not much. They don't know about Section Nine and their rights. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the tenants don't know what Section Nine is. They don't know what city council presidents are, but they sit at the table, they are a voice. And it's some confusion about the resident council. Or they the same as the tenant association, or they just another layer between residents and Nycha. What can Nycha residents do? Educate themsel- educate themselves and vote based on candidate's achievement, qualification, and vision. Because I read an article that said, Nycha residents don't get what they want because they are low priority because they don't vote. So that's something Nycha residents need to think about. Oversight, the oversight is confusing, very complex. And I think there needs to be a joint session between local, state, and federal so we can see who has the oversight over Nycha. Because I read that the um state government washed their hands of Nycha during the time of Pataki. And then in twenty, now this is when Pataki was in. Then in twenty eighteen, it seems like the state senate gave the oversight to city council.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Okay, just one more thing.
Thirty thirty seconds, ma'am.
Okay, and it's some other things that are, if you know, RAD PAC is imminent domain in practice. And I want you to realize that a lot of Nycha residents are civil service workers. And a lot of your employees are civil se- service workers. Another point, I heard that RAD PAC does not address the infrastructure. That's another point. And as for ma- um rogue um TA presidents, Manhattanville. Look at Manhattanville. They are supposed to be taken over by RAD PAC this summer, and most of the tenants don't want it. They don't know what's going on. They're being bullied. So I'm gonna have some of those tenants give you a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony. Leslie Holiday.
Starting time.
Hello. Um, I'm Leslie Holiday. I'm the Board President of Riverstone Senior Life Services located at ninety-nine Fort Washington Avenue, which is a Nycha senior housing complex in Washington Heights. We have served the community for over thirty-nine years. Our Nycha residents appear to be content with the results of the renovations and capital improvements. However, our experience as an organization operating from a RAD Nycha building has not been positive. What RAD has meant to Riverstone is the transferring of many costs and liabilities for which we were never previously responsible. We believe that these problems stem from a failure at the highest level of Nycha to anticipate the RAD program would generate a need for a written articulation of the relationship between the nonprofit organizations would operate under contract to other city agencies and the management running RAD buildings. Six and a half years since we learned ninety-nine Fort Washington was becoming a RAD building, we have no written guidelines. Our managing companies have expressed the opinion and operated under the assumption that Riverstone is a typical commercial tenant. The consequence of being located in a RAD building has been negative in many ways. As our director mentioned, our our deductible has gone from a thousand to twenty-five thousand. The absence of written guidelines means the boards operates without any clear understandings of our legal and fiduciary responsibilities. There is no clarity about the hierarchy of multiple companies that seem involved with ninety-nine Fort Washington. Furthermore, representatives from these companies offer conflicting and contradictory statements about the chain of communication and operating procedures. Our executive director now spends about fifteen percent of her time in building manners, undercutting her ability to lead staff and provide effective programming. Members of the Riverstone team will further address some of these issues in oral testimony. I want to say, listening to this hearing, I am a proud product of the Dykman houses. However, I am saddened by everything that I am hearing from the tenants today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, next testimony will come from Lisa Hall.
Starting time.
This is Lisa Hall and her mother Simone Hall, Nycha's Boston Seacor residence, a federally classified housing development in the Bronx, right across the street from Co-op City, the world's largest cooperative tenants association and apartment. And I wanted to discuss how this program, Project Base Section Nine, actually works. And we are um having a hybrid situation where the Wavecrest management team is coming in to privatize us. And we've had the death, as an earlier resident said, of our tenants association president in December of twenty twenty-two. So it left us with no authorized resident leaders. Yet someone is talking to the Project Base Section Eight and PAC program without our knowledge because we understand that NDAs were signed and we can't get any actual intel from what's been going on. But Wavecrest management has stated during these various PAC meetings that the Communication Director of Wavecrest Management said, "Your Section Eight voucher will remain with your apartment, and you can use it to move wherever you want. Rhode Island, Guam, Vietnam, or Puerto Rico, territories of the United States. But your voucher remains with the apartment and opens up the Section Eight waiting list to those who will enjoy your apartment." So what does that actually mean? That I'm going to remain in my apartment with a promise of a Section Eight voucher? And the people on the waiting list are gonna come to live with me? Well, we understand there is no official Section Eight. Even if you use the term interchangeably with affordable housing voucher, it stopped being funded in two thousand and nine. So we have been threatened now by if you don't sign the new lease, people will talk about you. If you don't sign, your neighbors won't get their repairs. When you sign the lease with your relationship.
Thank you, your time has expired.
I need additional time, please.
Thirty seconds to wrap it up, ma'am.
Thank you. So on Monday, we are being forced by Wavecrest Management to bring in our personal information, birth certificates, social security cards, photo IDs, driver's licenses, passports, and permits to force us to sign for Section Eight. And and this is not what we asked for. And they also put on the flyers that was left on our door. The English language version of this document is the official legal controlling document. The Latin translation is not an official document. So you have biases going on here for uh for development that we did not ask for. And what's actually going on is our our property is being commandeered by Section Eight and Wavecrest Management and put into a financial portfolio so that will control our apartments and disappear our apartments. And that is the overall agenda under the guise that you're coming in to provide uh upgrades, upgrades and repairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
For apartments we've been waiting for for at least twenty-plus years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Teresa, oh, sorry about that, Sarah Morgrade.
Starting time.
Hello, I'm Sarah Morgridge. I've been on the Riverstone Board of Directors since two thousand sixteen. From two thousand two through twenty thirteen, I worked for council member Robert Jackson. Riverstone was in his district. Currently, I work for Literacy and Community or LINK. LINK provides two-generation early literacy programming in eight NYC neighborhoods, including East New York and Cypress Hills. My testimony is about the absence of written guidelines, MOUs, or any other kind of operating agreement. For instance, we've never seen a sample or an actual version of the Nycha RAD contract that governs ninety-nine Fort Washington. How can we understand our parameters without that? Is it because Nycha's an authority, they're exempt from public scrutiny? Do we have to foil this? We have an excellent relationship with our RAD Social Services liaison, but no understanding of what her contractual relationship is to RAD or to us. We've been stonewalled throughout this process, which began in two thousand seventeen by both Nycha and until quite recently by DIFTA. Absent an MOU between Nycha and DIFTA, we have no knowledge of the operating agreement between these two agencies. We saw a draft lease that was really unfavorable to nonser- nonprofit providers. We understand that's off the table, but it's hearsay. We've never seen it in writing. We've had contradictory experiences with routine maintenance, something that Nycha took care of for years. February, when an urinal broke, our management company refused to fix it. More recent incident with rain-driven water seeping in through an air conditioner was promptly handled. At a recent meeting between the Executive Director and the organization's DIFTA liaison, positive progress was reported. That's encouraging, but until the liaison responds in writing to our director's written recap, we are skeptical.
Thank you so much, your time has expired.
We're not allowed.
Thirty more seconds, ma'am.
We look forward to receiving a written report of the topics covered. We would welcome the opportunity to discuss ideas with you about how this situation for service providers could be improved. We'd like to talk to you and members of the central staff because it's board members who have the legal and the fiduciary responsibility for service organizations. The current RAD structure undercuts our ability to provide services and threatens our solvency. We understand the benefits, but please do not ignore the very real consequences to nonprofits in RAD buildings.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for your testimony. Uh Teresa Scott.
Starting time.
Okay, um, hi, peace and blessings. Uh, my name is Teresa Lorraine Scott, living in Riverstone Houses. Um, I love public housing because public housing saved my life. And I feel like y'all are allowing Nycha to destruct, destroy, and destroy, destruct our homes. RAD needs to be sunset today. Sunset RAD today, don't wait until September. Stop RAD right now. Also, reenact the Fair Housing Club so people who were put in RAD by force by terror. This is the USA, this is not, we, you, Nycha has become terrorists. RAD has become terrorists. They they have guns on us, um, solid guns on us, forcing us to be part of stuff. Tell people I'm gonna give you, I don't need a new refrigerator. I need to be in a home that's safe for me, that's not gonna be harassed. We have been harassed for the last three years during COVID. We harassed, the resident resident, the resident manager told me when I was part of the board, that RAD was horrible. Then they changed their whole subject, oh, take RAD. So they're in cahoots of destroying public housing residents who wants to stay in their home. Same Section Nine is the only home that's affordable. No mixed income, no affordable, no, no, low-income house that's affordable. We need public housing. We need to keep it. The the Section Eight that they had years ago is not the same action. So they tricking people to, we, I feel that we need to have these leaders that were today to create a new, a new strategy. We have the solutions. We can tell you what to do. We need y'all to work with the assembly, the the HUD, and yourself to join us. I am so tired of of Nycha coming to me and lying to y'all, and y'all and y'all say the same thing. Send us letters, no, forget about sending letters. Meet with the residents that are here today. Let us be the leaders, because these TA boards are rogue like that, that that council will say, they are rogue. They don't care about us, they don't ask us questions. Why should an NDA be signed by a TA president? And then the pub, this is a public housing.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Public. Okay, and the other thing I want to say is that, Councilman Banks, thank you for having us think. But I need you to hire us to be part of this team. Make us be the new leaders of public housing, because we know what we need. Y'all don't know what we need, we can tell y'all. You listen to Nycha, and we are doomed. We need our homes. I am a disabled person, and if I have to put on the street, where am I supposed to live? I am a disabled person and if I have to put on the street, where am I supposed to live? I don't want to live with my parents. I want to stay in my home that's safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Fix our buildings and make us, make it livable for us. We, it's a human right to have a safe place there. And y'all have taken our rights by allowing RAD, destruction, all those other programs that are stealing our, our, our homes. This is our land, not their land. They just want our land. They don't want us, they want our land.
Thank you.
This land belongs to us, not to these other people that are trying to destroy our homes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Save our homes.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, Isaiah Thompson?
Starting time.
Thank you, Chair Banks and the committee staff, uh, for having this hearing. I'm Isaiah Thompson, representing Community Service Society. Uh, I'll be submitting a much longer testimony, but in short, last year, the Community Service Society carried out our annual survey, random representative sample of residents to capture the experience and needs of low-income New Yorkers. While we found that the PAC respondents reported that their landlords showed more respect and responded to repair needs much more successfully than NITIA, PAC residents were more likely to report serious concerns with leaks and mold, cleaning drinking water, as well as heat and hot water. These respondents were mostly in the areas where Park Rock Consolidated, Brooklyn Bundle, Hybridge Franklin, Northwest Bronx Scattered Sites, Twin Parks West, redepartments, and Ocean Bay conversions occurred. We also found that 43% of PAC respondents reported that their landlord tried to evict them compared to just 8% of NITIA residents. From this, we were surprised to find that many of the management partners at these conversions had trails of reviews and complaints on review sites and Google Maps and terrible images and videos on social media showing their conditions. Our written testimony includes examples of management partners losing subsidies in private buildings just this year due to failing HQS, a trend of residents getting no response from companies regarding emergency conditions in private and PAC units, poor maintenance of luxury buildings that they owned with pictures from lobbies and apartments, and evidence of harassment and being heavy-handed with evictions. It's a shame that these residents had to resort to Google map reviews and TikTok to express their dissatisfaction. Ultimately, it is one thing to present a pretty plan for resident leaders, but without real education campaign and technical assistance for residents and folks who can point out the questionable past of some of these companies, NITIA is not supporting residents with unbiased independent education throughout this conversion process that PAC gives. FEC in its survey is one of the best examples of this. We know that NITIA can empower residents with choice and information. The Preservation Trust slated sites have an extensive education campaign and an actual vote. We don't understand why some residents get this historic engagement and others are providing something completely different.
Thank you, time has expired.
Thank you for your testimony.
Just one more sentence.
Yes, you can have another 30 seconds, sir.
We recommend that a universal vote, um, passage of intro, 110, with additions that we will collude in our, um, our written testimony and a, um, real survey of resident satisfaction. A number of other solutions, um, will definitely be needed and it will show them in our written testimony and look forward to working with you to make them happen.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Yolanda Hall?
You may begin.
My councilman, hey, Chris, how are you?
Good to see you, Yolanda.
Um, I was on this meeting since earlier today and a lot of the points, especially from the sister that lived in Pembroke, were brought out, which concerns Pembroke, Linden, and Boulevard Houses. Boulevard Houses construction is one of the worst that I've ever seen. The material that was used in our development, all seems to be flammable. Front doors, floors, the paint jobs were like done with like plaster paint instead of semi-gloss paint. Um, the apartment is already falling apart. My apartment has already failed inspection from after being redone completely since December. NITIA came and did an inspection. But I tell you one thing is true, and I listened to everybody and the questions that was going on today. It's hard to reach NITIA. It's hard to reach anybody in this RAD PAC program that can give you any kind of assistance, even on the weekends when we have emergencies out here, um, in a district between Pembroke and Linden and, and Boulevard. There was no support system for us to call on the weekend. No support system. I don't feel that, um, I feel like I'm being invaded by Section 8. I was threatened to go on Section 8. If I didn't go on Section 8, because I've always been a Section 9 resident, if I didn't go on Section 8 when this RAD PAC program came out, I was being threatened to be evicted. And my mother too, who's been out here for 52 years. We've all been out here since 1972. So I will continue to support whatever fight that we have to fight with my councilmen and whatever other, uh, my Assemblywoman and whoever else, you know, within my district, but we really need to have an option to go back to Section 9. And we really need to have the PAT-RAD program and the management team of PRC in Boulevard Houses has to be removed. Has to be removed.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, thank you for your testimony and, uh, we are now going to move to Alex Stein.
Hey, guys, it's me, Alex Stein. I just want to talk about the latest political action committee coming out in 2024. We started, it's called Illegals for Trump, and we want to offer illegal immigrants better social services.
Sir, you have to stay on topic.
It is what I'm saying. We're going to be able to give Section 8 and Section 9 housing to illegal immigrants over American citizens under this new legislation that Donald Trump is going to put in because we need to support illegal immigrants or in all of these places.
Sir, you have to stay on topic.
No, but I'm talking about all these people are lazy. They don't deserve a house more than a person from Venezuela.
Sir, you, you have to stay on topic. That, that's not on topic.
No, but do you not understand what I'm saying? Why are all these people complaining about Section 9?
Do you understand what I'm saying? You have to stay on topic, sir.
Well, I'm talking about public housing and I'm talking about the Section 8 difference and Section 9 difference that's going to happen when legislation gets in that accommodates illegal immigrants over actual natural-born citizens. Because natural-born citizens, all these people were born in a still, they got a, 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 they